All right, good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. There is also an automatic external defibrillator that's available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the common folk who stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Health Center Board of Trustees, and I'll turn that over to Commissioner Duda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the monthly update of the HMA recommendations. Today we will be talking about the long-term care updates. Next month, we will have the Community Mental Health Center on as well as long-term care. Jen, could we have the roll call, please?
Chair Duda?
Here.
Trustee Cavanaugh?
Here.
Trustee Warren?
Here.
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 Thank you.
We now turn to our Director, Jim Turville, for the update. Good morning, Jim.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, trustees. If you'll refer to the report that Jen laid at your place before you came in this morning, we'll go through and just kind of touch base on those bullet items there. Regarding the Behavioral Health Work Group, that's a group that you started, Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Borgson started, and it's to look at possible services that we could provide to other people who need mental health services in our community. And at the present time, we are getting information from the state of Nebraska, Health and Human Services, to find out what the percentage of occupancy is for nursing homes in our region, to make sure that if there are any beds that are underutilized or not being occupied, that we can maybe talk to those nursing homes, see if they'd be willing to step up and provide some of those services as well. So that's in process to get that information as soon as we have it. We'll sit down, and we will go through that and look at in further detail. And under EHR, Diane Wallace would be here today, but she had a conflict. She's at the sheriff's office this morning. There's something going on there, and she's not being incarcerated.
That can be taken more than one way.
No, no, don't go. Please not. And we have a computer training room at the health center that we're setting up now, so when we implement EHR, we're gonna have to do quite a bit of training of our staff, and that will accommodate 16 students at a time to do hands-on training and learning the system. So that is nearing completion. Looks very, very good working with .com on that. And also, the contract negotiations between Meditech and Douglas County are nearing completion. We should have a final contract toward the end of this week. And under short-term rehab, we are recruiting an MTS nurse. We did have someone that we had hired for that position previously, and she decided that was not what she wanted to do, and she went back to her former employer at Boyz Town. So we're looking for a person to fill that position at the present time. We also are scheduling interviews with our clinical liaison applicants and admission coordinator. And one of those positions, we had 130 applicants for, so there should be someone that would be very well-qualified within that group of applicants for the position. Select Rehab's going to be providing us with outcome data that we can use to assess the effectiveness of the DCHC rehab services, and then we'll be able to market that to our community. And also, working on packaging our facility data regarding hospital readmissions. And we want to make sure that we're on top of that, because that can negatively impact our reimbursement, as well as the facility that we refer those patients to. So a lot of things going on, and then also, Chandra is here. If there's any questions, she'll be glad to present some information with you and share it with you, and then also answer any questions that she might have. Anything that you have for me today?
Any questions for Jim so far? Okay? Yeah, I think Chandra will be giving us a little more information on the short-term rehab, on how things are going there. This is probably the biggest sinkwell. Electronic health records is huge, but this is also another big venture that we're newly getting into here in an effort to improve our operations. How's it going, Chandra?
Good. What I wanted to present today was, when we started out, the average length of a skilled stay at the facility was five days. It's now, and the national average is 27.5. Our average is 23.5. So we are in a good spot. We're doing, you want to do that. We also, since November to the end of February, have provided 41 people with what we call Med-A skilled services throughout the building. So we've increased the length of stay for Med-Aid services for existing residents as well. So that's good news. We're seeing a lot of private insurance, as well as Medicare, and we're seeing a lot more people admitted into our long-term care with the mindset of they're coming in for long-term care, but they need short-term rehab services first. Excuse me, I have a cold. So those are good things. And then, just a little success story. We had a gentleman come to us when we first started short-term rehab about 14 months ago. The gentleman weighed close to 400 pounds. He could not get out of his bed. He could not roll in his bed. The other day, I saw him. He is walking. He has lost close to 100 pounds. He asked me if it would be a problem if he could bring his car to the facility, because his goal is to drive, because he wants to go to his Christian single groups. So he's probably got another six months, and the goal is to get him to assisted living. So he's been there with us under Med-Aid, and then transitioned over to Part B services and continued to receive therapy. So that's just a credit to the nursing staff and the dietary staff at Douglas County and the therapy department.
Very good.
All right, that's all I got. Any questions for me?
We had a little more in-depth going into this yesterday out of the trustee meeting, but it sounds like things are going very well on the short-term rehab. Trustee Rogers?
Yes, Chandra, thank you, Mr. Chair. I missed yesterday, but you say it went from five to 23? That number you gave of?
Right, so...
Okay, help me understand what five to 23 means.
So five days of Med-Aid services were being provided to residents of our own coming back. We didn't see a lot of, we didn't admit a lot of people for short-term rehab with the goal to go home. As, when that was the goal of opening the short-term rehab unit, to focus on individuals that needed short-term rehab with the goal to go home. We've met that, and we've also expanded that to, instead of just doing five days for existing residents, we're actually really meeting their needs more. And that's through education. It's through 14 months and 15 months of really hard work. So the staff is recognizing individuals' goals. We're incorporating therapy services in that, too. And we're also doing more B services, which just, an individual, if they have Medicare, for instance, has 100 days of therapy, Med-Aid services they can use. Once those are up, if they need additional therapy services, they can use their Part B. And we're utilizing that, too. I think the report said 45 people received Part B services last, from November to the end of February, so...
So I just want to, so usually, when you hear somebody coming to a health center and the stay being longer, that's usually bad. In this case, you're saying it's good, because they're getting the more comprehensive service, that they won't be back, hopefully, and they'll have everything solved.
Correct. Correct. So we're at the 23.4. The national average is 27.5.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Kraft.
Yes, when you said 100 days, is that per year or per...
Per wellness period. They have, so they get 100 days for every 60 days of wellness. So if they leave us after, let's say they do use their 100, and they have 60 days of wellness, they accrue back 100 days.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Chandra? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good report. It's a good program. It's good to see it getting off to such a great start, beefing up the staffing here a little bit to...
Anything else for me?
Better. Any questions for Mr. Turville? Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. The only other thing on the agenda is citizen's comments. If anybody in the audience would care to comment on anything concerning the Health Center Board of Trustees, this would be the appropriate time. I am not aware of any need for exec session, so entertain a motion. Well, I'll just call out adjournment. We're at the end of the agenda. Thank you all for a good meeting. I turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you. We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, February 10th, 2015, and Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, March 10th, 2015, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. There are seven, D through J. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, D through J.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? We have one item, that is permission to file disability homestead exemption for tax year 2014 for Suzanne Brenner of 7310 Gerard Street, Omaha 68122. Item K. Good morning.
Good morning, Mike Goodwilli, Douglas County Assessor/Register of Deeds Office. These are folks who moved to our state in the latter half of 2013, did not file a homestead application in 2014, got their tax bill in December of 2014, and now are looking to file late. The reason they're asking you permission is because technically, there is a provision in the law that says to people who are going to file after June 30, but before July 20, that they do have to request permission to be able to do so. We don't have an application from these folks yet. They are not in the system. What I can tell you is, at least the value of the house is within eligibility limits, although we don't know about their income.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the permission to file?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Item L, resolution for application for tax exemption on motor vehicles recommended for denial by the county treasurer's office. Is there a motion to approve? Any questions or comments? Please vote. Oh, does, we don't have need for an executive session, so does that include adjournment?
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Motion passes.
Agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, February 10th, 2015, and Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, March 3rd, 2015.
So move for approval.
Any questions or comments?
Motion passes.
Next is the consent agenda, Items A through U. There has been a request on Item A to lay over until March 24th. Are there any other items?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I think I've talked to most of you about my request to lay over Item B, and, you know, March 24th being appropriate.
March 24th?
That's three weeks. I thought we wanted four.
Four weeks? Yeah. That's not four weeks.
No, that would only be three.
Oh, what is four weeks from today? It would be four weeks that I request.
From 3rd?
Yeah.
I'll second your motion.
Okay. Commissioner Duda?
I would, for the same item. Thank you.
The four weeks is what date?
From 3rd, I think.
Commissioner, I believe it's March 31st.
Oh, March 31st.
We have a meeting that day, right?
Yeah. We just don't have one on the 17th. So March 31st. All right? So with that, the consent agenda is A through U, with A being laid over till the 24th and B being laid over till March 31st.
Should we move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional questions or comments?
Motion passes.
Next is citizen comments. Is there anyone here to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to presentations. Our first presentation is the MAPPA staff will present on the regional vision, and the board will consider authorizing the chair to sign the Heartland Regional Compact. And we have Mr. Yul from MAPPA. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm happy to, I'm Greg Yul with Metropolitan Area Planning Agency, happy to present to you today about our Heartland 2050 Vision that we've been working on for the past couple years. So I'm gonna begin with a brief video. You have at your places a packet that includes the full Heartland 2050 Vision document and some other information that I will go through during the presentation after the video. So we'll begin with this video here.
The Heartland 2050 Vision is to shape and develop the kind of vision where they want to call home in 40 years. Countless amounts of data have been collected and analyzed through this process in order to create the Heartland 2050 Vision. This includes talking with nearly 4,000 people across the metro, from community leaders to business professionals, as well as everyday citizens.
Heartland 2050 is a regional visioning project across our entire metro area. So that's the eight-county region, both Iowa and Nebraska, and we're looking to develop a long-term vision for how we grow in the future. We anticipate we could add nearly half a million people by 2050. So where are those people going to live? Where are they going to work? How are they going to get around? How are we going to plan so that the infrastructure that's needed to support all that growth can be done efficiently?
In November of 2011, the Metropolitan Area Planning Agency was awarded a grant to develop a regional vision for our metro, and Heartland 2050 was born. Their first objective was to bring a wide variety of citizens together from all over the region, rural, urban, and suburban. To do that, dozens of community meetings, forums, and workshops were organized to give citizens an opportunity to voice their priorities, values, and ideas.
The Heartland Project is a great catalyst just to be able to open up the dialogue and talk about these things.
The workshops that we were involved with wanted to make sure that the community understood the reason why we wanted to get their input. And so we had to let them know what this Heartland 2050 really is. This was part to be a little bit more holistic. It was gonna touch on transportation, housing, employment, energy. And so we really wanted to make sure that they understood, not only the smaller picture, how is this going to impact you and your community, but then how is that going to impact maybe your children and your grandchildren?
And out of that process now has come this really clear vision of where you want to go. Because it has some science behind it, it's really pragmatic vision of the future.
Today, Heartland 2050 is putting forth a roadmap with incremental steps to grow the region responsibly and improve the quality of life for all residents by the year 2050. Together, our region will strengthen its robust economy to encourage business expansion, job training and growth, and become a national magnet for a young and highly skilled workforce.
Together, our region will have the highest-quality education system that educates the workforce of the future.
Together, our region will be noted for its healthy living, safe neighborhoods, and exceptional healthcare providers.
Together, our region will be known for welcoming, connected, and lively communities that offer residents a range of housing choices and locations.
Together, our region's investments will develop efficient infrastructure that supports economic development, provides more transportation choices, and reduces energy consumption.
Together, our region values, protects, and utilizes our natural features and systems to provide access to green space and resilience from natural disasters.
The ultimate result of the Heartland 2050 Project is that we help communities to develop like their citizens want.
What's different about this effort is that it's a lot of stakeholders coming together and holding hands across the river and across county lines to say, "Let's help each other be successful."
If our corporations, if our businesses, if our communities are not reflective of what our region is going to look like, then we're missing the boat.
Talk about downtown Omaha and the redevelopment that's happened along the riverfront. That planning that helped lead to that redevelopment, that started back in the 1960s. So we're gonna have to be proactive. We're gonna have to be aggressive. We have to work together.
This vision is only the first step. Together, we can implement these changes to realize a better tomorrow. Go to heartland2050.org to learn how you can take the first steps to growing responsibly
All right, so that is, I think, a good overview of what we've been working on with the communities and with the participants in this Heartland 2050 Vision. So in your packets, you have the full document that shows the Heartland 2050 Vision. And if you look on about the third page, it has the acknowledgements of who was involved in this process. Commissioner Borgson represented Douglas County on the steering committee, and as you look through that list, you'll see a long list of people from public sector, private sector, and nonprofit agencies that have been a part of this. And so it's been a broad effort across the eight counties, covering the entire metropolitan statistical area, to think big about how we want to grow in the future and what our goals should be as a metropolitan area. If you look on page 13 of this document, you will see a list of the extensive public outreach that has been done as part of this. And so through 15 months of outreach, the team met with 175 community groups, hosted 25 visioning workshops, 10 values forums, and 19 open houses, attended six county fairs, 11 farmers markets, and engaged and listened to nearly 4,000 people. I would mention, in addition to that, we conducted two separate telephone surveys that were conducted by professional research firms to make sure the feedback we were getting from all of our workshops did align with the public at large in a statistically valid fashion. So we've done an enormous amount of effort trying to hear from the public to make sure that the ideas and the concepts that were coming forward out of this were truly representative of what the public was telling us. And from that, we decided to focus on six high-level goals. And these are pretty big, and these are admittedly pretty ambitious, but you have economic development, education, health and safety, housing and development, infrastructure, and natural resources. And that's because we understand if we're planning for the future, each of those are interrelated. So this is really trying to take a holistic approach to how we plan for the future and bring in people to the table from all of those different areas. And this is something I see at MAPPA, even though our job is really to work metro-wide and to coordinate. It's hard sometimes to break out of your day-to-day work and actually work with the people who are working in other areas or certainly working in other jurisdictions. So the goal of this is really to bring people from around the metro area to work on these different issues and make sure we're talking to one another and planning proactively for each of these different areas. Out of this came the vision scenario, which is in Chapter 3. You also have a fold-out map that shows this map in a larger way. So this vision scenario is part of the core of how we anticipate we can grow, and this envisions about a 1% growth rate. So it's, that's a pretty aggressive growth rate, actually, because if you look at just the birth and deaths and the demographic forecasts, we're gonna have to migrate in a lot more people than we have in the past to maintain that. But yet, 1% is basically considered the minimum growth rate for a healthy economic growth. And so this envisions close to 500,000 new people in the metropolitan area. You can see a number of those in Douglas County, and so this has a lot of suburban growth, as well as a lot of redevelopment and infill that is reflective of some of the demographic changes that we're seeing. We have a lot more empty nesters that might not want a larger lot development. We have a lot of millennial people that are looking for some of the infill and redevelopment opportunities. So this has a bit of a shift in some of how our housing has been over the past 40 years. So you can see right here, this lists the different housing types going all the way on a spectrum, from large lot residential down to smaller lot residential to condos and multifamily. And so this vision scenario does have a more balanced approach, we believe, that is more appropriate to the market that we will have. And all this, too, is about really trying to strengthen our neighborhoods, make sure we know that we've gotta have safe neighborhoods and strong schools. We don't want to abandon our urban cores or our small town. It's not just an urban issue. We heard a lot of this out when we got into rural areas of the issues of housing stock and having older, decaying housing stocks. We know revitalizing those neighborhoods, both in the urban centers, in rural areas, and as well as in suburban areas, is gonna be important going forward.
Excuse me, what pages? It's hard to find. Hello, when you don't tell us pages. Are these in this book?
Sure, that vision scenario is in the book, and that would be on page 41. And then you also have the brochure that I believe Commissioner Kraft has folded out there. It's a separate brochure that has the entire map.
But it doesn't have that on that.
Does not have.
So that's on page 41?
Yes, it's on page 41.
Okay. And the next slide?
Right. Yeah, this would be, if you turn the page to page 42 and 43, I just picked out one, Balanced Housing, and this actually has a number of different metrics that were used as part of the vision scenario. So that's on pages 42 and 43.
That doesn't match what you're talking about in this book. Where's the 94% in here?
That's, well, it's showing the target there. That's the anticipated market that was done by economists as part of this study. And so...
This one says 100%.
The 100% on that page is just showing, it's just a total. It's showing 100% of future growth. It does not mean that... The Balanced Housing match, that's talking about the difference between the vision and the target. The target being what the economists forecast for our housing market in the future based on demographics and market trends.
Have you ever seen a fire hose in operation? That's kinda what this is.
I understand.
Okay, let's let Greg finish his presentation.
Well, I would just like to see that in something like this, so I could read it. I can't.
Okay.
You don't have that in this. Exactly.
Right, okay.
Okay.
I understand. It's a lot of information, and I'd be happy to sit down with you and give, I could speak for a couple hours on all this, believe me. In this vision forecast, one of the things I'd like to point out is if we grow in this manner, it will save the taxpayers a lot of money. Scenario A, which was the, if we took the trends of the past 30 to 40 years and just continued developing in that manner, which I don't think is going to happen, but just to show a contrast, it would cost us about $28 billion for all the public services, the infrastructure, roads, water, sewer, et cetera. If we follow the vision scenarios, anticipated that we'll spend just over $23 billion. So you're talking nearly $5 billion in savings. That's real money that through efficient planning and working together that we can help save in the future. So how does this relate to our local jurisdictions in Douglas County? As I've been explaining, I think this is a real opportunity to coordinate planning not only across different sectors and different interest areas, but also different jurisdictions. This will provide tools and models, so as we look at redevelopment, we look at what are some of the obstacles and some of the issues that have been identified through this process, we can help promote those tools and models across the region to different jurisdictions and organizations, and make sure that we're working on those. And then securing grants and resources in a more proactive and strategic manner. This is, we know that we work together already, and we know that we get grants and go after things already, but I think this will help us really have that goal out there, to be strategic and proactive, to aggressively go on, say, "This is our goal. These are the particular grants we need to go after," and this will help us accomplish that. I did want to mention a little bit, I know there are some members of the public that are concerned that this might be tied to the Agenda 21 in the United Nations, so I included in your packet a flyer here that lists some of the concerns that we have heard throughout this. And so I'll briefly go through these. Is this an attempt at regional government? Because one of the things that you will hear, that this is, I'm trying to usurp the authority that's properly given to the local governments, and I quickly would state that MAPPA is not a regional government. We are a council of local governments, and we're represented by locally elected officials. There's only a couple true regional governments in the country. Those would be in Portland and Twin Cities, where they actually have taxing authority, land use authority, and this is not that. So that's not correct in this situation. Do we... Do we are trying to take away local land use authority? Absolutely not. This is based on collaboration and working together and anticipating that local governments will continue to be the jurisdictions who approve local land use authority. Some people have complained that this is trying to force people out of their cars, forcing mass transit on an unwilling population. Our forecast envisioned that well over 90% of the future trips will still be made by the automobile. So, we understand that the way we have developed in the past still lends itself to personal vehicles, and we anticipate that that's going to be the predominant mode of transportation well into the future. That being said, we also heard from a number of members in the public who are interested in having additional options and additional choices. So, this does see an increased role for things such as public transit or communities that are more walk-friendly. But it certainly is not, I think that's providing more choices for people, not taking away any choices. And then, also, is this an extreme environmental agenda that would try and promote population control and reduction? You can see on here Agenda 21 concern that according to its authors, the objective of sustainable development is to integrate economic, social, and environmental policies focusing on three components: global land use, global education, global population control, and reduction. And so, our goal here is to help grow this area. And we want to see this area both have economic and population growth and do that in a way that our infrastructure can support and that our governments are able to support. So, I guarantee you that this is not reflective of Agenda 21 in that way. Those of you who know me know I have quite a, I'm blessed with quite a crew of kids myself, so I assure you that I'm not about population control and reduction. Achieving the vision. So, you have in your packets as well a draft action plan. This is what the committees worked on over the last summer and into the fall. And the action plan is a list of ideas, and we're probably not going to do everything in there and not going to be able to do everything in there, but it's something to start with. And so, those are some of the strategies and actions that the implementation committees will be looking at. So, how we go forward from here, Heartland 2050 proposes implementation committees that would be working, again, bringing people from the public and private sector together and from across that eight-county region, to be talking to one another, looking through those, that action list and say, "What is the low-hanging fruit? What do we need to prioritize and make happen? And where do we need to work with the chambers of powers and businesses on?" And then, specific working teams or implementation committees, as we call them, around each of those areas. And also, I would mention in your packet, we have an executive committee application form. We are taking applications from any interested individuals that would like to serve on that executive committee through the end of April. And so, certainly would invite you to consider applying for that or talking to others you think might be forward-thinking individuals that would like to spend their time and serve on this type of committee. Today, you have for your consideration the Heartland Regional Compact. And this is a statement of support that we're asking local jurisdictions to consider signing onto. It basically says, "We agree with the big-picture goals, those six goals that were outlined. We agree to continue to work together as a metropolitan area on this Heartland 2050 project." It's basically saying that we will endorse allowing staff to continue to participate with this, participating in those committees. And then, we'd also like to have, we're targeting this July to have the first semi-annual implementation summit, where twice a year, we come together, talk about these goals, bring in some speakers, and see how we're doing as a metro area in trying to achieve these goals each year. So, that's for your consideration. It's voluntary. As part of that, there is no financial obligation per se. There is a line in the compact that says, "Considering financial contributions," I think if you do support this in good faith, that this is over and beyond what MAPPA normally does. So, we have, we'll be putting out a funding request to communities that sign on, and I believe that that's anticipated to be $7,500 to Douglas County. It's about 15 cents per capita is about what it comes out to. So, I think it's a pretty modest investment in the future of our community and to work together as a metropolitan area. As far as MAPPA's role, what we do, our commitment would be to basically staff this project and continue to provide the necessary organizational support to be that liaison in our role as a regional council of governments between the different local governments and agencies. And then, to be doing some of the work of following the data, checking the metrics and our progress at how we're doing towards the goals. So, that's our commitment to continue to work on this process. And I guess with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have and try and touch on anything I might have missed.
Okay, we have a few lights. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I have a lot of difficulty, and I do the same thing to every speaker, about numbering pages and referring to things because it's kind of a flood of information most of the time. But I, you know, it's pretty glossy and pretty, but I want to talk about a couple of things. One is, where does rapid transit figure in all this? And the reason I ask that is that some time ago, MAPPA took a poll, I believe, probably six years ago now. And I thought it was almost even with 50% of the people wanting to pave the world and the other half wanting to do something about rapid transit. And nothing's really changed. We have a bus system that's independent of MAPPA that I don't think makes it to maybe 132nd Street. I'm not really sure, but we don't have service out to anything beyond that on Maple. And then, also, you know, the other problems are that it runs so many few buses, it seems, that when I drive by, I see people waiting for the bus all the time, all day long, on Dodge Street, which is pretty silly. What are you doing about rapid transit for real? What are you really doing?
Okay. So, actually, on page 17, I think, are some of the polls that I might have mentioned in my previous briefings to the board that talk about that. And yeah, you see a pretty significant percent of the population that did say they were interested in transit, even to the point of supporting some additional investment in public transit. And this is something that we hear. It doesn't matter, it's not just in the urban areas. When we go out to suburban areas, we hear a lot about desire for enhanced transit service. So, that is, I think, foreseen as part of this vision, is that that is a need that's listed in the actions and strategies of working. MAPPA worked with Metro to do a regional transit vision. So, right now, they are going through some service changes to make their service more efficient and really increase the frequencies of how soon the bus comes on some of their primary routes. And that's seen as, that's the first phase of multiple phases of that regional transit vision. And the goal there is basically to provide better service, to show that it works, to not maybe have empty buses going around, to have it be more driven by the market. And then, in the future, if you can demonstrate that that's successful, expand transit service. We're also working closely with Metro on the bus rapid transit project that would go down Dodge Street, that they received the Tiger grant from the Department of Transportation for. So, what we would foresee as part of this is some nodes of higher-density development and transit that connects those nodes in certain corridors that are designated.
Do you support the organizations like metro area transit getting gas tax to support their operations?
This doesn't really speak to specific funding policy questions exactly how it happens, but what we do see is that there is a desire for transit, both in terms of helping people get access to jobs and also in terms of creating the type of community that there is, appears to be a desire for, the people who might want to have only one car in the household and use transit. So, however that has to happen, we would support that.
Well, it's my opinion, you know, we can talk a lot about things that we want to do, but if you don't put any money in the game, it doesn't happen. So, it's my view that the legislature, when they expanded, and it was Senator Fisher who got it through, added sales tax to the support of building highways and so forth, which is another issue about the money where it came from, and some people claimed it came from education. But, so that tax is going to be diverted into highways. And for some reason, other forms of transportation, of public transportation, just don't even get a glance. They don't, they're never considered on even keel with building highways. And I think it's a real flaw because, you know, I think a lot of people would take public transportation if it was reliable, frequent, and, you know, operated in a way that would get them where they need to go without a lot of, you know, a lot of problems. But I think it needs to be funded, and if you don't fund it, then it's not going to get done. So, that's, you know, we don't need to run that into the ground. I wonder with, you mentioned population, and I had a friend of mine, Dick Schotker, who used to be the chief administrative officer of this county board, geez, I guess 20 years ago, told me that, you know, this whole idea of this area growing and growing and growing is really a myth, that what it really is, is there's a stable population here that in this region, that really moves from the country into the city, rural areas to urban, and that it really is a trade-off. And if you look at the population of the state, I think it's been relatively stable, 1.2 or 1.3 million. And that it really is, you know, we're kind of caught up in some of the excitement of other communities. And I don't mean to be, you know, to dog this plan or not. But I remember when I got a phone call from a businessperson one time in the Omaha community who said, "Do you think it's possible that we could get cable cars in Omaha?" Well, the answer is no. But I didn't say that. I said, "Well, anything's possible. Let's talk about it." Well, Omaha doesn't have the population for cable cars, and where would you go from and to? I mean, you know, it just really doesn't really fit. This is not San Francisco. And so, people travel and they see these wonderful things that go on, restored street cars, all these sorts of things, and amenities that they want, you know, professional football teams, professional baseball teams. We don't have the population to support those things. And so, that's why I really hope that we get grounded, including MAPPA, gets grounded in reality about what we can do with the resources we have. That was a sermon. And then, the, sorry. And then, I'm curious about whether, in the housing section, because I haven't seen this yet, but in the housing section, are you doing things to encourage infill? Are there incentives that MAPPA gives or can give, or any governmental body can give to? Or are they already giving incentives to build and come into the older parts of the city? Some of it's going on, and it's really pretty, pretty nice. But do you know of any incentives that back up these efforts?
Right. I mean, I think that is part of the action plan, and if you go under the housing section, there's several things listed. Incentives is one of them. Looking at barriers, we've met extensively with Metropolitan Omaha Builders Association and talked with them and heard very candid comments from them about, "What are your barriers? Why can't they build, you know, in the urban core or in older neighborhoods?" And so, looking at barriers, looking at incentives, looking at what are some code things that can be done to help promote it? And again, all of those are strategies that we want to help move forward.
Well, and a lot of times, it's hookups to MUD and the gas and the water that are quite expensive, and I don't know if that applies in the suburbs because they have SIDs in areas that are not in the city. So, maybe legislation should permit that. SIDs inside city limits would be appropriate. And I don't want to pass, and I'll try to be a little more brief here, but I don't want to pass on the question of bicycle transportation. I don't ride a bike, but I do live in an area where I pass, I drive down streets that are, have bike paths, and they're used. And I think we really need to do everything we can to get behind that. And I think, one last thing I want to mention, and it's probably really impossible, and that is the, you know, the restoration of the train line from the Wallston area or using the train to get people to commute. The lines are there, the railroads are there. They do it in larger communities. Is that a pipe dream? Is that something that we don't have the population to support? I just want to throw that seed out.
Okay. And that was something that came up during some of the conversations and some of the meetings. So, I think it's an idea floating out there, but certainly something needs to be vetted and looked at. We tried to do something that has some big ideas, but is also pragmatic, and so, that's the happy meeting we should for.
Well, I think this is really terrific that you've done this plan, and please don't take my questions as criticism, other than just curiosity and wanting some answers. So, I appreciate the work you're doing.
All right. Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Teresa Yerick. Teresa Yerick County Attorney's Office. I was going to ask the commissioners if they would consider laying this over. I was going to ask for two weeks, however, the board does not meet on the 17th, and so I will ask for the 24th. My purpose in making that request is that this agreement has not been reviewed yet by our office, and we would greatly appreciate the opportunity to do so. The agreement is of itself very short, however, it has this board adopting the Heartland 2015 plan, and that has also not been submitted to our office, and we would greatly appreciate an opportunity to review both.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
Thanks, Teresa. I was going to ask some of the same things. The other thing, what's the fiscal impact? I mean, I'm not sure if, I for sure don't know. I don't know that other commissioners do. And I'm not certain if Mr. Lorenz, our finance director, knows. Maybe you can tell us?
The fiscal impact of?
Let's say it was approved today, and I'm in favor of laying it over till the 24th, but I'm wondering if you?
There is no fiscal impact. This is not a funding request at this point. What I did mention is that we would like, in good faith, we will be sending out funding requests to people that decide to adopt the compact. It's optional and voluntary, and we anticipate that would be $7,500, based on about a 15 cent per capita estimate. So, and that just covers the unincorporated portions of Douglas County. The cities are also receiving a separate funding request. And that is, again, just to help that, minimal total raise about $100,000. We have a grant from the Peter Kewitt Foundation. We're able to use some of our federal funding as well. And that's just kind of a skeleton budget to support the staff, to keep this going, to be able to provide the organizational needs to support all those committees and keep the Heartland 2050 project moving forward.
But then, as you continued on, there'd be greater financial impact, I'm assuming, if?
I wouldn't necessarily assume that. I mean, obviously, there may be some modest increases, but really, the intent of this is collaboration. So, the people working together, we identify, here's our goals, here's some projects, and it could be a public-sector project, it could be a private-sector project, but it's how are we working together and sort of monitoring that progress as a metro area towards accomplishing our goals? So, it's, Heartland 2050 itself would not necessarily be the vehicle to be asking for large funding, if that's the concern.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? If not, I know there are members of the public here that would like to come forward and speak. So, Greg, if you want to just stay close in case there's any follow-up questions?
My name is Doug Cagan. I represent Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. Our group vehemently opposes the Douglas County Board participating in the Heartland 2050 vision. By our reading of the materials, this proposal would impose regional unelected government dictates over local governments elected by the voters. A Water Resources Coordinating Committee jurisdiction would overlap existing natural resources districts. A new regional utility, water and sewer authority, appears to create another taxing authority that mirrors MUD. An air quality coordinating committee would overlap local subdivision responsibilities. A regional bike trail and park system with a regional finance structure appears to establish another bureaucracy to levy a tax on citizens. An attempt to implement regional bond issues and planting infrastructure across current political boundaries would occur. Regional street guidelines and regional land use assessments would overrule local governments. A steering committee to guide this master planning process appears to bypass local officials' purview. This committee indeed has the responsibility to push this master plan through to city and county approval. We believe, however, that inter-local agreements among government entities can satisfy, manage, satisfactorily manage inter-jurisdictional problems and endeavors. In addition, this Heartland vision would impose strict government dictates on how we live. Superimposed on us would be building of multi-generational communities, mixed-income residences, and dispersment of low-income housing that drastically alter residential zoning. It radically amends building and use codes and would prohibit neighborhood covenants valued by homeowners. Housing density bonuses and cluster housing would radically change the character Housing density bonuses and cluster housing would radically change the character of established neighborhoods. Moreover, Heartland vision forces particular and objectional lifestyles, rules, and costs upon citizens. Plans to expand multimodal transportation, we think as Orwellians speak, for greatly expanding mass transit and bike trails at the expense of private vehicle transportation. Providing English as a second language at lower-low cost to many more, including illegal aliens. Forcing employers who receive economic development funds to pay the inflationary living wage and recruiting new businesses that pay only this wage. Public development funds to buy and preserve land for industrial development, something traditionally done by private developers. Many of these impositions follow the line promulgated by Omaha by design, designs that already approved costly to Omaha taxpayers. Key phrases such as planned growth and development, reduced energy consumption, and more transportation choices translate into additional government invasiveness into our free choices as taxpaying citizens regarding where and how we live and travel. What it really does is pack people, like into sardine cans, and it's attacking our private property rights. In closing, I'm going to leave you with copies of my presentation, and also what's happened in the city of Omaha when they've implemented some of these items.
Thank you, Doug.
Any questions?
Nope.
Thanks.
Next.
Hi. I'm Mary Jane Trumper. I'm president of Omaha Liberty Ladies, which is a group of just under 900 conservative women in our region. We meet monthly and have speakers nationally and locally that speak on a variety of topics. We are vehemently opposed to this Heartland 2050 vision. I know I only have a short amount of time. I will tell you, I went and looked at the grant application that this was funded off of, and that had a lot of concerns, just in the grant application. I have that on a flash drive for anybody. I do try to save trees, so if anybody wants to look at the grant application. But it starts out with the asking in the abstract that we're going to get a preferred configuration of systems for which to aim in development of more specific land use, transportation, and housing plans. The consortium it talked about is committed to the programmatic outcomes identified in the proposal, speaking of the grant, in seeking and supporting widespread adoption of the final principles of the plan. This plan was already in effect. The outcomes were predetermined. This is not something that's new. This has been done in Europe, it's been done in Australia, it's been done in many cities here in the United States, but the outcome is eerily similar. You think it's just here for Omaha, and this is our plan, and we got all these people together, but all of this outcomes are eerily similar. They all lead to high-density development and to mass transportation. Those are the two big tenants of this. Some of the problems that were listed in this grant application, the problems were, one of those was that Nebraska's a right-to-work state, and so those processes have eroded the base of blue-collar urban and rural jobs, not the influx of illegals, not high-tax structure, none of those things, the fact that we're a right-to-work state. It talks about fragmentation of housing, and one of the problems listed is only 20% of the region's households are burdened by housing costs that consume 30% more or more of their income. But then it goes on to say, "The true cost of this land use framework can be observed in rising transportation costs." So again, the low housing cost is seen as a detriment, because that negates the need for this high-density development. Another thing listed in the grant application was only 30%, 36% of jobs in the A-County Heartland catchment area are accessible within a 90-minute bus trip from a commuter's point of origin, and since the average commute time for the region is just shy of 20 minutes. So the fact that we have good, efficient road systems, our commute times are 20 minutes, that does not fit into the meme of rapid transit. Do we need rapid transit? I, I think we do. We have poor people in our neighborhoods that need to get to jobs. But the problem is that the TIGER grants that we get for the bus rapid transit, they're going to, that's going to be going along a major corridor. That is not going to solve our problem of getting people from North and South Omaha to southwest Sarpy where the jobs are. And that's the problem with this top-down government bureaucracy and policies coming down, which is what this plan is about. We have to dance to the tune of the grants that are being handed down by TIGER, transportation grants or whatever. We can't make our own solutions and fix our own problems. We have to go to the dictates of what's coming down from the federal government, so-
Thank you.
But I have a lot more, and like Greg Yule, I could speak on this for a couple of days.[908.12][908.12](Laughter). Does anybody have any questions? Oh, I do have some handouts and a flash drive that have some things on it. Thank you.
Okay. Great. I'm putting an article by Stanley Curbs in the Heartland. Okay. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Rachel Pinkerton. I'm on the executive committee of the same women's organization that Mary Jane referenced, Liberty Ladies. Along with my husband, John, I attended a total of four Heartland 2050 events. The first was at the Public High School in Wahoo. Putting aside the fancy clickers and the extravagant maps and the fresh-faced scripted facilitators, it was tempting to pretend we were just members of the community, getting together, forward-thinking, eating pizza, and talking about what we want our legacy to be. That fantasy was shattered by the omission of Dodge County. Because of Fremont's refusal to dance to the federal tune, Dodge County was omitted from this process. And that was a challenge for our facilitators to explain, when we continually said, "Well, how does this work? If we're talking about living and working in this, in this region that we're sitting in the middle of in the cafeteria at the high school, why aren't we talking about Fremont?" Well, that was hard evidence that this was the federal top-down, that this, the fiction just fell apart there, that this was any kind of a grassroots community effort looking forward. There's a new TV show on, you might have caught, called Strange Inheritance. I saw an episode. A gentleman had spent an enormous amount of money on a cello, I believe it was, and his heirs ultimately decided it was just too costly to keep that inheritance. And they decided to sell it, if I'm not mistaken. And I think about the freedom that we've inherited, purchased with the blood of patriots, and the hardship and the sacrifice of our ancestors who left homeland and got in a boat or got on a covered wagon, looking for liberty and dignity and opportunity. Let's, let's not let our legacy be that we decided that that freedom was too expensive and we sold it. Please vote against participation in this Heartland 2050. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Next. Let's get out the, John?
Hi, my name's John Pinkerton. I'm her better half, or not really. We are, we are just average taxpayers. We're both Benson bunnies. My whole family is. We own four businesses in North Omaha and employ about 20 people, so we're not a big organization or anything. But, and I went to the same meeting she went to, and Jeff here, and he's a great guy, and I, I wish he wasn't involved in this organization.[1158.12][1158.12](Laughter). I feel sorry for you, Jeff, anyway, but, but he can run a good meeting and neat guy. But, what's your name again?
Greg.
Greg made a statement that, I wasn't going to say anything, I just brought my wife down here, but Greg made a statement that, how this is the, so far, this is the culmination of the efforts of 4,000 people and their consensus that they have brought through these meetings to get this thing moved forward. And that bothered me a lot, because I was at these meetings, and I would say, of the 4,000 people that attended these meetings, if there was 40 that knew what they were consenting to, I would be surprised. These meetings were rah-rah things, they sounded great, and they use these little clickers to gain consensus on these ideas, and they all, they did sound great and left you feeling with a good, good feeling after the meeting, but I don't think hardly any of the people knew what they were doing at these meetings. And if they're using this to tell you how to vote on this, you guys are being duped. That's just an ignorant taxpayer's idea, idea that what is going on here. I don't think this is a good, I don't have a good feeling about this at all, so, but I appreciate what you guys do, and I know it's tough, and I want good things for our area. When I went to the Benson one, I thought I was going to a, a meeting for Benson, you know, you know, with ideas about what to do for Benson that would increase business for a small business then there. And after I got done, I realized that wasn't what this was all about at all. But anyway, good luck.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board on this issue? Greg, did you have a comment?
I did want to clarify one thing, that Dodge County was not included because the grant required us to apply as a metropolitan statistical area. So the MSA, as defined by the Census Bureau, is eight counties, and Dodge County is not part of the MSA. That being said, we did reach out to Fremont and actually had a workshop there in Fremont, which we didn't have to do. It included members from the schools and city leaders and others, and we are more than happy to continue working with Fremont and Dodge County, but that was the background there on that. And then as far as the, the concerns on the high-density and that, that does get, I think that's an emphasis, because that's an area that we have not done a lot of in this. So it's, sometimes when it's, you're talking about changing anything, it gets a little more emphasis. But that being said, if you look at that vision scenario, there is an enormous amount of land that is still anticipated to be suburban development, and so I don't think that it's true that this is trying to force people into urban, high-density living.
Thank you.
And that's reflective of the input we got in those workshops as well.
Commissioner Boyle?
Greg, I've got a question on this big map here, and I, I'm embarrassed to say this, because my family is from Saunders County, and my parents are married in Fremont, St. Pat's, but isn't Dodge County up here?
Correct. Right.
It's not on the map.
Right.
So I'm still not clear why, why it's not included.
Well, Dodge County was not officially part of the project, as they're not part of the metropolitan statistical area-
They're not part of MAPPA.
...as defined by the Census Bureau.
They're not part of-
No, they're not.
They're not.
Yeah, and actually, MAPPA's only five counties. This project brought in three more for the MSA. And then that map zoomed in a little bit, too, just in order, if we would have zoomed really far out, then it would have gotten really little.
Well, it seems kind of odd. I mean, Fremont is one of the larger cities in the region, I mean, of all the cities. Was there, I mean, were they ever included in MAPPA?
Yeah, they're, they're a part of the Northeast District, and again, that MSA-
What Northeast District?
Well, so the entire state of Nebraska divided up into economic development districts. MAPPA's the, the EDD is the terminology for Douglas, Sarpy, and Washington Counties, and Dodge County's part of the Northeast District, which is based out of Norfolk. But again, we did reach out to them and are, and are happy to continue to work with them as part of this.
But I mean, I'm sorry, I hope not belaboring this, but it reminds me of our confrontation with the National Resource District, when we found out what they were doing, and we were a member of their committee, we pulled out. Douglas County was not involved in-
Instead of out in the open? Don't you think we should go back that way? Let the bureaucrats behind closed doors instead of having an open process? What do you think, Mr. Yule?
I think coordination is a way forward to help our, our area realize its potential, and so I'm fully in support of coordination.
And you pointed out, a quick analysis shows that over a length of time, it's a $5 million, just in planning, is that correct? Is that what you said?
I was talking, I think that might have been $5 billion-
$5 billion? Okay.
Yeah, the public use for all of the infrastructure-
That's just petty change, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No big deal there.
Okay. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Any other comments, Greg?
No.
Well, I thank you for your presentation, and I also appreciate the input from our citizens. There's a lot of material here that I think it would be helpful for us to review. I know the issue of Agenda 21 had come up prior to this, and I'm still trying to understand the, trying to understand it all, I guess, let's put it that way. So I appreciate the information you provided, and I will certainly be looking at that. But the last comment, as part of the steering committee, I can tell you that we, we hear a lot from citizens about cooperation and collaboration, and that we need to kind of step outside of our own boxes and our own four walls and really start working better with others, and especially when it comes to our planning processes. And so I, I saw this as real opportunity, and so I'm, I'm trying to figure what your all concerns are and what our real process is. I can tell you, for one, I would never, as an elected official, give up the authority we have in deciding what's best for our community. But at the same time, sitting down with others from other communities is a good thing, so that maybe we could plan better together. So once I review all that, you may be getting an email or two from me, just so I can understand it a little bit better, but I do appreciate you all taking the time to come and provide us your input. And then Greg, I'm sure there'll be follow-up questions from folks once they review everything, but I do appreciate, too, the work that not only the steering committee, but the staff has done in moving the process forward to where we are to have the discussion today. Commissioner Morgan?
I was going to make a motion that we lay this over till the 24th, if that's okay with the board, unless, Mr. Calhanog, you think we should go to the 31st?
No, that's fine, Richard.
Okay, and Teresa, you feel that gives you enough time?
Yes, I think that will be adequate.
Okay. So I'd make that motion to lay it over till the 24th.
Second? Any further comments? Any further comments or discussion? See, Commissioner Boyle?
I'm just curious whether we're going to be hearing from anybody or can we invite people who have opinions to continue to communicate with us and both?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so I hope you'll do that.
Absolutely.
Our emails are on the internet?
Yeah.
Thanks.
My number's in the phone book. Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please vote. Next is a presentation on the state of public health, presented by Dr. Adi Por, our Health Department Director. And this was brought to us by Commissioner Rogers, who sits on the Board of Health. Did you want to make some comments, Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is just the annual report that Dr. Por submits to the Board of Health and eventually comes to the board to get an idea and understanding for discussion. I think one of the interesting things you'll see in there is a discussion that the board had about STDs and where it was a couple of years ago and where it is now. Other than that, I'd like to note to the board that we added last year that the mental health piece from all the discussion as a priority. And hopefully Dr. Por will go into some of the things that we've done this year to try to educate the board on it and the public in regards to the chip. And I think the board will have some room for discussion in the presentation. Thank you.
I'm sorry, probably are having some difficulties trying to pull up the latest one.
That's okay.
No, that's 14. 14. Final, what was the date of that one? 13, no, it has to be three, two, we had to three, two. There you go. So thank you, Commissioner. Let me get started. We're having some difficulties pulling this up. What's the problem? You know, you may not get to see it this time. Is it because it's view or should it be just...
If she can't get it, Chris, you want to hold it up until next week?
Maybe. We can.
Otherwise, you know...
You want to hold on, Dr. Por?
I'm going to hold off on it then for next time. Thank you. Sorry.
That's all right. That's all right. Technology, just never know. That's right. Okay, so we'll just put that presentation on for next week because we're having technical difficulties.
The next one needs technical help too.
Oh, well, well.
I think I have to work on it. Can I work on it?
Yeah, why don't you walk up there and see what you can do, Commissioner Boyle?
Okay.
Hammer and some duct tape?
A hammer and duct tape.
Our technical guy we need back for our next, see if you can pull up that one. Next is our presentation, of our presentation is an update on the Douglas County Health Center Foundation. And this was brought to us by Commissioner Duda, so...
I placed it on the agenda, but Amy Chittenden, the President of the Foundation Board would be the speaker. Hopefully. Well, she's got an announcement to make whether she has a technical helper.
Oh, I have tech. It's going to work. So my part's going to work. Well, good morning. Thank you for inviting me down. The Foundation Directors and I really appreciate being able to come and speak to you today. And I'm going to talk about three things.
Could you just state your name and who you're with?
Oh, yes, sorry. Amy Chittenden, Douglas County Health Center Foundation.
Thank you.
I'm going to talk about how last year, 2014, was the Foundation's 20th year, 20th anniversary. I'm going to talk about our year-end letter-writing campaign that we did this past December and what the results of that were. And I'm going to talk about an upcoming community collaborative event we have in three weeks on Tuesday, March 24th. So in 2014, we celebrated 20 years since our incorporation as a nonprofit. Last year, we highlighted through our e-newsletter communications, some of the projects and initiatives that we've accomplished in those 20 years. And I'm not going to talk about all of them, of course, but I'm going to highlight about five. So one of the things that we have done over the 20 years is we award scholarships with money that was donated to us by Dr. Thomas McGruder III. That actually was our origination of why we have a foundation today. And we give those scholarships to full-time employees who are pursuing their advanced, not advanced, but they're pursuing further education and degrees in certified nursing assistants, licensed practical nursing and registered nursing. We have sponsored speakers to come into the Health Center to talk to employees through educational events. We've had nationally renowned Alzheimer's and dementia specialists and advocate, Tepa Snow. We've had Dr. Bill Thomas, the founder of the Eden Alternative, come in. We also, and he's actually going to be in, he's connected to the event that I'm going to talk about last. So I'll kind of save that. We have ongoing initiatives at the Health Center that happen all the time, year-round. That includes welcome baskets for all new residents. We provide six days a week of Omaha World-Herald subscriptions to all the neighborhoods at the Health Center for resident usage and for family use. We provide a comfort cart that goes with the family when they have a resident in the Health Center who's nearing their end-of-life journey. And we sponsor an annual service of remembrance for family members who have lost residents within the year. So that can bring these, these families together again to celebrate the life of their resident and to also realize that they're not alone in their grieving process. We, we worked with Health Center Social Services Specialists to transform an unused ground floor room in the West Wing to make that into a private family room for families to come, to come visit and have some privacy with their families or if they need to meet with doctors, nurses, visiting specialists. That was one where we partnered with social workers because they had identified a need that in the West Wing, there wasn't really any space for families to do this kind of work with their, with their residents and what their residents needed, need. In between 2005 and 2008, the Foundation fundraised over $1 million through support from local philanthropists and foundations to construct a building addition on the Kavanaugh Care Center. That building additions provides residents with more space, more natural light. It also includes a resident fitness center. We've also raised over $90,000 through grants and individual donations to implement a new meal service system at the Health Center, which moves the Health Center towards a model where residents have more choice, they have more participation in their meals and they socialize more. And we've read, you know, maybe three or four studies that show that that enhances their health outcomes and also benefits that relationship between employees and residents. So those are some of the highlights of what we've done over the past 20 years. But in the interest of time, I'm going to move us on to what we did for our 2014 year-end letter-writing appeal. So this past December, we raised over $10,000 through this letter-writing campaign to be used towards the purchase of pajamas, slippers or a robe for every long-term care resident. We were really pleased that this particular appeal struck so many donors so intently and so, as something so worthy to support. We're really excited about it because it really takes us back to our mission of improving the quality of life of residents where it's a direct effect on their life. And we are working with Didi and the social workers to kind of take the next steps, figure out what all the residents, which piece of that puzzle they want. And then we're going to, you know, get that all taken care of. So that was pretty exciting. It averages out to about $44, $44 to spend per resident because we have 232 long-term care residents. So raising the $10,000 was pretty exciting for us. So to get to the, probably the most fun part of our presentation is we are doing a community collaborative event on Tuesday, March 24th with Film Stream's nonprofit cinema. We are going to be screening the Sundance Film Festival's 2014 Audience Award-winning documentary, Alive Inside. The documentary follows Dan Cohen, the founder of Music and Memory, through the healthcare system as he advocates music's ability to combat memory loss, including in those with Alzheimer's and dementia. Douglas County Health Center is one of only three facilities in Omaha that offers the Music and Memory Program. This is run through the rec therapy department and we've been working on this program about 15 months. And I think almost all long-term care residents are on this program. After the film, there's going to be a panel discussion about music and memory, the effects of the program on the Health Center residents and an audience Q and A. Tickets are on sale right now. And I'm going to go ahead and play the trailer from the film. And after that, if you guys have any questions or comments about what we've talked about, I will be happy to answer any questions. So here you go.
I think I'm losing it. I love the music. I love it.
Have you ever had music just hit you in a place that immediately brought you to tears? Music has that power.
Music connects people with who they have been, who they are in their lives. Because what happens when you get old is all the things you're familiar with and your identity are all just being peeled away.
We're going to do your medicine now, all right?
The healthcare system imagines the human to be a very complicated machine. We have medicines that can adjust the dials. Blood pressure, oh, turn that down. Blood sugar, oh, turn that down. We haven't done anything to touch the heart and soul of the patient.
One resident that Billy opened her eyes, she didn't respond. I've known her for two years. Once we put the iPod on her, she started shaking her feet. She started moving her head. It was amazing.
Music has more ability to activate more parts of the brain than any other stimulus.
Who am I? Who am I? I'm your daughter.
By exciting or awakening those pathways, we have a gateway to stimulate and reach somebody who otherwise is unreachable.
It can't get away from me if I'm in this place.
Takes me back to my school days. Oh, God, that's, that's beautiful.
Does it make you happy to sing for us?
Yeah. I'm crying.
Every human being needs stimulation from the outside, from little babies to old people.
American culture is wrong. There is actually life beyond adulthood. There's the opportunity to live and grow and become elders. The aging that we experience holds in it very important learnings and lessons.
There is no pill that does that.
Oh, thank you so much.
Okay, so there's the tears of joy. I thought you were going to grow wings.
I was trying.
So you can see it's a pretty impressive film. Whoa, sorry.
What do you think of music?
Okay, there we go. It's a pretty impressive film. There's going to be some really interesting, I hope, question and answers after the, during the panel discussion because I think that that program that we're using at the Health Center really shows just how you can kind of make connections with people who I think sometimes you believe are unreachable. We were really lucky to be accepted into Film Stream's nonprofit collaboration. And I really hope that we have a sellout event. Yeah, like I said, tickets are on sale now at the Film Stream's website. And if you had any comments, questions, anything?
Commissioner Craft?
Tuesday, March 24th.
Three weeks from tonight.
Three weeks from tonight, 7:00 PM.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you and thank you so much, Amy. Two things further to mention. Film Streams, if you see one of the ads for this, you will notice they say, "Please bring your used iPods." And, and so they're collecting iPods from anybody that has any extra that will go to the Douglas County Health Center and be put into this program. Even though we already have quite a few in there, we can always, always use a few more. And the other thing the Foundation is doing in conjunction with this, and if you can see my tear-stained face, we're handing out Kleenex packages at the Film Stream showing compliments of Douglas County Health Center Foundation. I've been told this movie is quite a tear-jerker and I believe it.
I have been told that as well. And I've also been told that at the Sundance screening, that the audience was up on their feet at the end of the film, just kind of cheering along. And yes, I wrote my tissue up here because when I watched the trailer yesterday, you know, I got a little verklempt. So, yeah. So that's it. So Tuesday, March 24th.
Commissioner Boyle?
It's Alive Inside.
Great. Well, it really looks terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. No other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Oh, and I have a, I have a flyer. I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that.
Thanks, Amy.
Next is a public hearing. The public hearing is to, for providing additional budget dollars for salary adjustment account along with grant-driven budget increases for county administration, youth centers, sheriff, juvenile assessment center and community mental health center. They increased budgets for dot-com, federal drug forfeiture and authorized airline tax repayment to the state of Nebraska. It will reduce the budget for library fund and transfer budget dollars that are set aside in salary adjustment accounts for future salary increases. And Mr. Lorenz, our finance director, if you have any additional comments or he's there for questions?
Yes, Commissioners. You know, we do budget supplements or modify the budget twice a year. This is the first time we're doing it after we have the results of the first six months in and we do the salary adjustments. And then we'll tweak it again in May as necessary to make sure everybody has enough money to get through the fiscal year. But just a couple of points of summary of what we're doing in this budget supplement. The largest component are salary adjustments. And these salary adjustments are when we go back and, you know, we have $2 million allocated in the budget to cover salary increases for both the union contracts that have been settled and also the non-union contracts that the Commissioners voted pay increases on in December. And this year, we're actually going to go over the $2 million that we had and we're going to actually appropriate, I'm asking to appropriate another million dollars. And that's really driven by a couple of things. Last year, not all the union contracts settled when we thought we did. So actually, we had $2 million in the salary adjustment last year and we only used $1.005. And that's because a big contract like FOP 8 didn't really settle until July and there was close to a $400,000 retroactive payment there. So what's really happened this year is we've settled a lot of union contracts. Some of them have had major retroactive components. And so, and if you also remember when we voted the non-union contract settlement or pay increase of 4% in December, the budget had funded 3% of that. So there was a percent that was unfunded, which is worth about $250,000. So what we're doing here is selling a lot of... So what we're doing here is selling a lot of contracts, a lot of agreements, and it's gonna take the extra million dollars to do it. But like I said, $500,000 was underspent last year, and I would anticipate that next year, you know, Marco's doing a really good job at settling the contracts, that the salary adjustment will be, amount we'll put in the budget will be less last year because so many of the union agreements are settling, settling this year. So, that's, that's a big component piece of the salary adjustment. And then, there's also pieces for adjustments to individual department budgets that we're making, and the great majority of these are related to grants received by the different departments, which have a revenue offset, so that means that they're, you know, budget-neutral from our impact. And the largest one of these is actually through administration, where you can see that the budget is being increased by $954,000. And that's really, the major component of that is the funding for the FSG study, which is really being run through the administration budget. But if you remember this, that $736,000 is being completely offset by donations from three separate foundations, along with the county's portion of 25% is being grant-funded. And there's also within the administration budget an increase of $322,000 for the 2014 community-based grants, which again are being funneled through administration and then being put out to these different programs primarily related to juvenile justice and juvenile issues. But again, these are grant-funded and have no incremental impact in, in total spending for, for our department. Similarly, the youth center budget is being increased by $309,000, and that's a combination of a Sherwood grant and also the youth centers' portion of the community-based grant services. The sheriff is going up $126,000. Those are also grant-funded. There's some Homeland Security grants in there. The juvenile assessment center is going up $14,000, again, grant-funded. So all these budgets that are going up related to grants are revenue offsets, so from the, they're not gonna be using incremental taxpayer dollars at all to fund these programs. There's a couple other things going on. The, there's $475,000 in the supplement for dot-com, and that relates to, in December, the dot-com people came to the county and the city and said that they were having a crisis with their SQL server, which is the backbone of the IT system, and that they needed, you know, emergency money to fund it. And so, the city and, and the county looked at it and went through the budget and funded the minimal amount that we really thought feasible, which was $950,000, which was $475,000 from the county, $475,000 from the city. And we're gonna fund that through our inheritance tax fund, because inheritance tax fund is running about a million-three favorable to this point. So we're gonna take $475,000 of that favorability, and the city's gonna take $475,000. I think they're gonna take it out of their, their restaurant tax, which was running favorable. And this is really an issue that gets caused by, within the dot-com budget, that's an operating budget. We really don't have a funding mechanism for, for capital expenditures for IT purchases within dot-com. And so, until we can really develop a funding mechanism, there will be these periodic instances of, you know, emergency capital expenditures on IT equipment, which you really have to almost look at as an infrastructure expenditure. But like I say, we're gonna do that, and we're gonna fund that from the inheritance tax, so there won't be no impact to the general fund. The other thing that's there is, that's incremental, is there's $73,000 that we have to repay the state of Nebraska that we originally received last year as airline tax distribution. I can't go through the whole details of it, but the state informed us that that was an overpayment, and we have to repay $73,000 back, and they said that has to come through the general fund account, and so following their kind of dictate on this, we will be paying that $73,000 back after it's here approved by the board, and that was, of course, not budgeted for. In terms of some other funds, some adjustments we're making, there's $88,000 coming from the Health Center, the Community Mental Health Fund, which again is a grant, that's the, I think it's the IOP program that they're doing in conjunction with Corrections, that of course is grant-funded again, so there is a full revenue offset. There's, the sheriff has requested $390,000 come from the Federal Drug Forfeiture Fund, and that's a transfer that's gonna be used for record, the records management system that they purchased in December to update their record-keeping, and they're using, funding that from federal drug forfeiture. One positive is on the library fund. The funding of that will actually go down $214,000 because, and that's related to the annexations that the city did, where more people transferred, became from rural and non-incorporated Douglas County into the city, so the more people that are in the city, there's a per capita amount, so that reduced our contribution of that by $214,000 in, in the library fund. So that's kind of the summary of the key points. Like I say, we only do this twice a year. There's a lot of fiscal housekeeping here, and, but I said, the really, the only true incremental impact to the general fund are the million dollars for the salary adjustment and the $73,000 for the, to repay the state on the airline tax. And with that, I'd be glad to take any questions.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, Joe, I really appreciate the explanation. I'm curious, when you talk about these grants, for example, the $954,000-plus grant for administration, and our share is whatever it is, 20, 250,000 or something, does that, does this mean that that money will be coming back to us? When you talk about it, it almost looks like it's a grant, and we're forwarding the money. I don't understand why.
Well, FSG, you know, we have the contract, the consulting group, and we're paying them, and we, so we pay them, and then we send the bills out to the different groups, and they pay us for it, so the net, net is there's a dollar-for-dollar reimbursement on it.
Okay, so I guess what I would like to see is off to the right, you know, what the reimbursement will be, because if we have a, if we have a grant for $954,000, and we're gonna get back $680, I'd like, it'd be nice to see that to the right-hand side, because it's not a true, it's not a true cost to the county.
Right. I mean, the, the true cost to the county is zero, because this is 100% reimbursed.
Okay, I thought we had, we had some contribution in that.
But that's being funded through, through, I think, a community-based service grant. So even though we're responsible for that piece, it, it too is grant-funded. These contributions from the three or four foundations aren't actually considered, they're not a federal grant.
Right.
Or, but the community-based service grant is money that we receive that, you know, maybe Patrick could talk to it, that he has negotiated and said that these, our portion will be able to be funded from these specific community-based service grants.
Okay, well, let me interrupt. I, what I really am looking for is, if we're not gonna be spending $954,520, if that really is a wash or some sort, I'd like to see that off to the side, because the way this is suggested, it looks like we're paying this and there's no, we're not giving anything back.
Yeah, and I guess, Commissioner, that relates to government accounting, where you're not allowed to offset revenues and expenses, that, you know, we have the expense account, and from our budget, we have to increase it that much because it's an incremental expense, but we have an offsetting revenue, and, you know, unlike some other systems of accounting where revenues and expenses can offset, you show a net amount under government accounting, that's why we have the two budgets. We have the revenue budget and the expense budget, and that's why I present it that way.
Well, I guess I don't look this, look at this as government accounting. I look like this is a document to inform the county board, and, so that if we're, if we're not spending $954,000 and that's gone, that's one thing, which is what this says to me. But if there is a offsetting revenue, it'd be nice, just as an informal document.
Sure, I can do that. But I, but I, we have to be clear that under statute, it has to be common, we have to run and, and increase our budget by that much. So this is a statutory requirement, but I'd be glad to highlight that.
That's why I think it would be important, at least for me, to understand this, that it's, we're not paying this all out, and there's nothing coming back. And this is just, to me, is not government accounting. I mean, this is just an informal notice to us about what's going out, but we don't have the figure of what's coming in. That's all I'm really saying, on any of these grants.
Right, and that's why I'm saying that the net incremental amount that we're doing through these supplements is the $1,073,000.
Right. That I understand, that's gone. Yeah, that goes. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, I'm gonna pick up with one of Commissioner Boyle's favorite issues. The $73,000 that the state wants back from the airport fund, why don't we just write a check to ourselves to offset the unreimbursed JEL funds?
That's a policy issue.
That the unemployed former governor is...
Then I have a, on the RMS, the Record Management System for the sheriffs, did that go through dot-com?
I don't believe so. I think, if I remember, that they brought that to the board in December, and that was, you know, Tom Wheeler presented it with Diane Wallace, and that was that Motorola-based system that they're implementing, that will improve their record-keeping and make it digital, they're gonna basically make it digital record-keeping.
Okay, so Diane Wallace was involved in it?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I meant to ask about, you mentioned that there is no mechanism to buy hardware for the, for dot-com. And years ago, I mean, years ago, Douglas County, when it ran the computer center, did have, someone up here remembers this. There was a data corporation that had funds and did bonds. Is there, is that, that apparently is gone and dead. Is there any chance to resurrect that?
Well, it's something that I'm working with the City of Omaha Finance Group on, and we're looking at potentially using a vehicle, a bond financing vehicle, and we're gonna look at, at data center, and, you know, the way that the, the city is set up, it's also a little easier for the city to issue bonds than it is for the county, where they could, they could, there's a chance they could issue the bonds, and then we would reimburse them for the annual payments.
Okay, and the other question, you mentioned something about population. Does that have to do with the sheriff's grant?
I don't know. The, the population was just on the library funding.
Okay, tell me about the library funding. What was the, what happened, the population drop?
Well, the, remember that, right in October, November, the, the city annexed a number of SIDs?
Yes.
And that, when you do that under the library formula, the county pays a per capita amount for all residents that aren't considered residents of the city of Omaha.
Right.
And so when those areas were annexed, they became city residents, so the number of people that we were paying that per capita amount on decreased. And so, because the number of people decreased, then it's a, considered a budget amendment as opposed to a budget adjustment, so the library fund and our contribution is being reduced by the $214,000, and this is all laid out in an inter-local agreement.
Okay, what I'm looking for is the number, the number of people that are being subsidized in this library. Do we, are you able to get to that number?
Well, I don't, I don't have it right in front of me, but I can give you, there's basically two numbers that we do the calculation on, and that's the city of Omaha population, and then the Douglas County population minus the city of Omaha population.
That's what I'd like to see.
Sure, I could send that to you. I don't have it right in front of me.
Thank you.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. I just wanna remind people on the library tax that this is not coming out of the county's general fund. This is a tax paid for directly by the citizens or the taxpayers of unincorporated Douglas County. The way the formula works, it lags by a year. It's based off of Omaha, whatever Omaha spends out of their own budget. Every year for libraries, the following year, every resident of unincorporated Douglas County will be contributing that same amount, but it does lag by a year, so whenever anything like an annexation occurs, it will impact the following year, the, the funding level.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, Commissioner Duda, I'm not looking at the library figures, I'm looking at the upcoming discussion about consolidation of the Omaha Police and Douglas County Sheriff, just to see what this figure generates for population.
I'd just like to point out, because nobody ever seems to remember, that the citizens of unincorporated Douglas County are paying this directly, and I'd just like to remind the board, it's not, there's no subsidy, it's not coming out of the general fund.
And that's not what I'm looking at, I mean, not even bringing that up.
I never miss an opportunity to remind people.
Thanks.
With that, if there are no other questions or comments, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Any further? Please vote.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, maybe I missed it. Did you close the public hearing?
I'm sorry, no, I did not. Sorry.
It's good.
Let me go back. Is there anyone here wishing to speak during the public hearing for Oregon? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. Thank you.
And Joe, thanks for a good job, as usual.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
It goes back to old feuding you brothers had, I know. Goes back to some basketball you took. Come on, Jim.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay, next we'll move to committees, the first being the finance, and there's a budget report. Commissioners Morgan or Kavanaugh, do you have anything for the finance committee?
I think, Madam Chairman, that the calendar of finance committee hearings has been sent out by Mr. Lorenz.
Okay, and the only other thing, I think everyone received the letter showing salary increases, and what we're gonna have to do and the difficulty we're gonna have this year to be sure that we put all of our efforts into trying to make sure we have a, a budget without a mill levy increase, the difficulty is gonna be that home values have had modest increases, and with salary increases, as Joe presented in his letter, it'll be a challenge. We'll go through that process. Joe, if I'm stating anything incorrectly, please correct me, but I appreciate all of your participation, as you did last year. I'd also like to be sure, Joe, for example, the League of Women Voters, Doug Kagan and some others, you might wanna send them out that letter by email or however you wanna do that, different organizations that have participated, and we'll go from there, and any of the other members of the board's suggestions on our budget or what we're doing are most welcome, always. Okay?
Commissioner Boyle?
I'd just like to make a suggestion, and I did this morning, I think, when I saw the, the letter, or, you know, the times and dates. I was suggesting that instead of requiring every, every department to bring 15 copies of their budget to these meetings and prepare all that, and use all this paper and ink and everything else, you know, that I've got all this information right now on an iPad that I received, and I wonder whether we couldn't send that information out to our, through email, scan the documents, send them out at email, so that we can look at them before we go to the meeting, make comments, and then at the meeting, we have a nice, I think, a big projection screen now in 903, and the personal service is always really good at being able to use that, and I think it would be great if we could use that. And the civil service is always really good at being able to use that, and I think it would be great if we could use that mechanism instead of, you know, using four hundred thousand trees to present this budget.
I really think that's commendable and a great suggestion, and the other thing that I think you like is for people to put the page numbers on those pages.
That'd be pleasant, that'd be pleasant.
And I like that too, so those are great suggestions, Commissioner Boyle.
I'll try to number my requests, too.
I already put one on there, put number one on.
You think we can do this?
Yeah, we can try it.
Joe, you feel good about that?
I think for those that would still like paper copies, they can get paper copies, but, um, let's try it.
Excuse me, but I think if you get an email with an attachment, if you wanna print it out.
Yeah, you can print it out, right, right, for those that still want to, like Commissioner Rogers.
Yeah.
Okay.
You need more paper in your office.
We'll move to Child and Youth Services, there is a presentation on our Community Comprehensive Juvenile Services Plan.
Sam's giving it?
By Sean Compher from the Juvenile Assessment Center.
Can I make a comment?
You sure can.
I think the board, I asked this to be presented because, one, ten years ago when I first got on the board, I remember seeing this presentation every year, and I had kinda been asking where it was. As of the last couple of years with changes in the Crime Commission and some changes from the Nebraska Juvenile Justice Coalition, this plan has taken on new significance, some of it, that's, it's, as some may recall, it's done every three years. It's a requirement that each county must have this on file so that they can apply for Title II monies, is it Title II? Well, it's, it's federal monies that come down through the federal government, they go to the state. And again, each person must have this on plan, this now has got new significance because it's an, it's one that will be updated, updated regularly other than other three, other than every three years, and I know the JAG is taking new efforts for that, so I wanted the board to see it, because in the state's terms, this plan is seen as each county's bible on what they're doing in respects to juvenile justice, so I figured we need to see it on a regular basis and get educated to it.
It's tied to that, the community-based services grant dollars, too, so. Great, good job, let's go.
Ready for me, I'm Shawn Johnson Coonfair, I'm the Community Resource Analyst at the Douglas County Juvenile Assessment Center, and thank you for the time today, you barely need me, that was actually the best summary I could've given, so I'll try and keep it nearly that brief. I sent ahead a one-page explanation of community planning that has really some nuts and bolts details, as well as the executive summary for the current plan, so that you can have in front of you the current plan priority areas. And again, I will keep this very brief, eight slides, one is a title, one is my name.
Commissioner Boyle isn't here to hear that.
So really, just to reiterate what Commissioner Rogers said, referenced in many Nebraska state statutes is our comprehensive community plan. It started way back with the Juvenile Services Act and has progressed through the most recent legislation. It really enables every county and entities within each community to draw down funding from both state and, and federal sources. It is on a three-year planning cycle, our current plan is the 2012 to 2015 plan, and the state also has a three-year plan that is required by the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention. That plan is due to them this month, so we should be able to see the final draft that's going to them sometime within this month that outlines the State of Nebraska priorities. The State of Nebraska priorities are determined through our individual community plans, compiled and then, and then put forward, and we each have input into that plan as it's developed as well. Of course, most recently, community planning was very greatly bolstered and enhanced through the passage of LV 561, which put in place a new statewide director, state advisory committee, and I do serve on that advisory committee, as well as guidelines for regulations, there will be formal rules and regs that will come out of that committee and group this year, and the additional funding, which we've spoken of already today in a couple different things. This is a really busy snapshot of the types of funding that we can draw down, and I'm just gonna quickly summarize. The Title II and juvenile services are, in fact, federal funds that are appropriated through whatever funding is available. There's really no rhyme or reason to the funds, whether we get those or not, they fluctuate mostly going down, and Nebraska gets a portion based on the contents of the state plan. The third bullet, juvenile accountability block funds, is based on population per state and is specifically to go to juvenile justice. We're in the last year of those funds, those funds gave us a little over forty thousand dollars this year to Douglas County, based on the fact that we have the highest population in the State of Nebraska, and again, those are completed as of this year, no more federal funding in that, in that pot. The community-based aid is former county aid, so in the past, we've talked about the county aid funds, those are state funds appropriated by the Nebraska Legislature. We also use our plan to draw down funds around the area of the Office of Violence Prevention Funds appropriated by the Nebraska Legislature. And that last bullet there, to really talk about that additionally, when we're applying for federal funds from the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, National Institute of Health, National Institute of Justice, the Office of Justice Prevention, those JAG grants, and other sources to include the, include the local foundations, we're always asked, what do you have as far as a strategic plan to serve youth or to accommodate juvenile justice needs? And this is the foundation that we use for that, is this community plan. All right, the community plan impact does not stop at funding. We really do use the community plan to ensure that our community efforts are aligned with one another, that we're serving youth very efficiently. The plan enables communication toward efficient service to youth both inside juvenile justice and on the prevention end. And the plan really serves as a framework for partnership and collaboration around funding and service. The way we support and complete this plan over the last decade has been the Juvenile Justice and Provider Forum. There's a recognition of everyone working in service to youth, be it prevention, schools, juvenile justice, that no single program or agency or level of government can meet the needs of serving youth, that it takes a greater collective impact to do that. The JJPF has really served as the city-county partnership of providing the work around the strategic plan to keep those efforts going. There's been a recognition that there's a breadth of needs and a greater breadth of service providers and services in the community to meet those needs. Through the JJPF, we share information across the community, come together around grant collaborations, and complete the community plan. The JJPF is the vehicle for maintaining these efforts currently. And the current priority areas that you also do have a copy of really are around the areas of attendance or truancy, behavioral health, information sharing or the community planning itself, system reform, housing stability, reentry, violence, whoops, and I skipped disproportionate minority contact. Another reason we're here today, like Commissioner Rogers said, the new plan will be due June 30th of this year, so we do plan to spend the next couple of months creating an entire new plan that we'll ask for board approval on probably that second week in June to make sure we get that in on time. And although it is a three-year plan, as a part of the community-based aid grant, we're required annually to put in an update to that plan, to show what our outcomes are, to really include the data of our current efforts. So you'll be seeing a lot more details the next time.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers, did you have any additional comments?
No, I just wanna reiterate that, you know, it, it, whenever it's done, a lot of the work, I think, is already, a lot of the foundation work that usually would happen has been done through the efforts that we've been doing with, with the FSG, so some of that will be plugged into that, and I'd just like to encourage the board, once that's done, to kinda stay up on it, because I know that, at least for the last couple of years, the Chair and I have, have met with the group to try to really make sure that the funding is targeted towards some of those needs and uses in that regard, and, and any, any effort the board makes to just stay up to speed on that is beneficial, particularly in the future years with FSG.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, do you have a, a copy of what you showed there, what we have doesn't quite match up with it, is it supposed to or not? Oh, you have a handout?
I do.
Oh, great, that'd be helpful.
But you guys just mentioned killing trees.
Well, I know, but that's the way it goes. I'm the one that complained about it, so, but.
What I sent ahead of time is, is just a little bit more detail and a different layout.
Okay, and the other, what I wanted to ask you too on, is there a component in here, I didn't really see it, maybe it was there, is there something in here about getting young people jobs?
There is not, no, there isn't a current.
You know, I personally think that's, that is critical. Former Senator, State Senator Brenda Council got legislation passed in one of the final years that she was in the legislature, and it put, that legislation put close to twelve hundred children to work in different parts of the state wherever they lived. And it was a remarkable success, first of all, it, there was a great deal, thank you, a great deal of pride in the young people having a check, getting paid a check first time in their life, they took pride, they showed up for work on time, all this sort of thing. And then, of course, the funding lapsed. The city is involved now in a, I think it's called a step-up program, something to that nature, I'm not sure exactly, it's a city program. And it, I was talking to the, one of the mayor's staff members a couple of nights ago at a meeting, and it does include, I think, up to people twenty-one years of age. You know, and it's a fact that what started the, a main factor in starting gangs in Los Angeles was the closing of about seven major industrial manufacturing plants led by the Firestone Tire Company. And when people suddenly had no job, everything just went to hell, and it's been going to hell ever since, it's been spreading. So I think, I'd like to see, it may seem that it's out of your realm, but I think a real way to really interrupt this behavior is jobs. And so I, I hope that somewhere, while this may seem beyond your responsibility, I think you're uniquely placed to be able to facilitate this, if we can just find a way to, to do that. Lastly, I wanna say United Way is getting very involved, and I'm working with the Court Diversion Committee, that when a person is sentenced by a judge for community service, that it is now being turned so that in addition to community service, these young people will have an opportunity, they'll be said, they'll, they'll be told, you know, if you'd rather not go to work at Goodwill hanging clothes, why don't you go back to Metro College and get you, finish your GID, G, uh...
GED.
GED, wow, and so that's an alternative, and it gives them an incentive. I just mentioned that, and I don't expect you to carry the burden of, of this, but it's something I see is, would really connect with what you're doing.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and the plan is also preventative, it's not just about juvenile justice, so it's very important to include those ideas.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Do you mind if I say one thing to Commissioner Boyle? Even though job reentry, our jobs aren't on the plan as a priority area, when you look at what is being funded through the Office of Violence Prevention Grants and also through some of the reentry, jobs are incorporated in, as solutions, okay, to those issues versus being a problem, they are the solution. So they are incorporated within some of the activities that are taking place to address those issues, does that make sense?
Yes, it does, and I'm glad to hear that, thank you.
Sorry, I just wanted to...
Thanks, that was good, Adam.
Commissioner Rogers?
No, and I'll pick up on that theme, I was, the point I was gonna make is I think a lot of these programs put the youth in a position to get there. I mean, a lot of it is system stuff that kinda frees them through the system, helps them get there. Also wanna note, too, that, you know, Step Up, Step Up is not a city program, the city puts a chunk in with CDBG. Cause matter of fact, to his credit, after a conversation with the clerk last year, clerk's office has stepped up too, and the clerk's office, through the Board of Equalization, has offered jobs through Step Up also. And so, you know, I agree with your fact wholeheartedly, and I think if, and the process is starting out with it, I think, even though we're at a strain financially, people have participated in Step Up by some of the job opportunities that may be open through the county that we may make available to some of those youth, so there's an opportunity to get there wholeheartedly. And, and if there's discussion the board wants to have on that, I think we can, I don't know where it's at now, but I know right now, Douglas County Extension is participating with them for a leadership program to help do some prep for some of those kids. So it's, it's a really based, a community-based program, kinda facilitated by Empower Network more so. So they're, just so, you know, people know there's room to, to get into it, and it's, and it's kinda just starting now, the flyers are out there, people are going in, so that's, that's where it's at.
Okay.
Thanks.
No other questions or comments, thank you guys for being here for that presentation.
Thanks for cutting down the tree, I appreciate it.
Next, we'll move to Human Resources, the first report is the Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service. If no one has any questions or comments, we'll move to the Weekly CAO Report on Staff Assaults.
Nothing to report.
And next are the legislative issues, please note the language that's been added to the agenda to take care of the issue that was brought forth the last time we met. And so item A is Resolution opposing LB 414 relating to providing a property tax exemption for paternal benefit societies. A hearing before the Revenue Committee is scheduled for March 5th, 2015, is there a motion to oppose? Is there a second? I will second it, Commissioner Duda?
Thank you, when, this looks like it's directed towards the Woodman of the World, although reading this morning's paper, it also affects the Knights of Columbus, so it's not just one entity. But when the Woodman of the World came before us, saying they believe they should be tax exempt, we relied on the county attorney and their counsel saying they don't interpret the law this way, that, that Woodman is deserving of the exemption, and therefore we did not grant it. But it wasn't based on our personal opinion of whether or not we thought Woodman deserved to be tax exempt, and, and I fear that that's where this is taking us. We are a creature of the legislature, I'm not so sure that the legislature really cares that much about what we think. There are times I believe that we need to just recognize our role and sit back and let the legislature make the laws and we carry them out. I, I think we're, we're stepping over the line here when we come up and say, okay, not only do we believe you, you don't qualify it, but we wanna make sure that the law says you don't qualify. To me, that's a little too in-your-face and confrontational with the Woodman of the World, and there is talk about them moving across the river. This is a decision for the legislature to make, not us, and, and I don't think we should be sticking our nose into this. I think this could be taken as an affront by Woodman of the World, and I certainly don't wanna be a part of that. I think they're a great company, I'm glad that they're here, and I hope that they stay here. And, and I think we should just be sitting back and letting the legislature make this decision, and then we carry out in accordance with whatever they dictate to us. So I'm gonna be voting no on this and, and think we're taking stands on too many issues, and this is one more example, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on LB 414? Commissioner Rogers?
And I wanna put it in motion for discussion because I, you know, that's how most of the decisions, to Commissioner Duda's point, that's how most of our decisions are made by the abides of legal house, we choose if we're gonna take it or not, and we make our own minds up. We choose if we're going to take it or not, and we make our own minds up on it. And I think, you know, that law was clear in that respect. The only reason I comment on this is that, you know, I had angst with the fact that, you know, for 30 years, this is, for whatever amount of years, this has been in place and it's been getting paid. And then all of a sudden, this comes up. That's on their preview to do, but, you know, the, I've had a lot of questions on the article that was written by Aaron Grace, and most of you have probably read that. And so, you know, everything to me points that it's a company, the sales insurance, the charitable pieces are part of it. And the point that stood out to me more than anything else is that, you know, I appreciate the charity that the corporate community gives, you know, ours was the lesser of the charities to some degree. Now, I'm not saying that, that's my opinion either way, but I just want to know that stuck, that stuck to me, that, you know, your headquarters is here, this is the place you pay the less of your charitable place, and you're claiming to be a charitable organization. So I don't have a if or a and either way to it, but I think there, you know, the question made to me was, was this what it is? And it smells, it just smells bad. It smells bad in some way. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, this is a really touchy issue, and I don't know whether what I'm about to say should be said because I think we have depositions coming up. As we go, Council, I'm going to talk a little bit in detail. Should I not do that?
Not knowing what you're about to say, Teresa York County Attorney's Office, not knowing what you're about to say, Commissioner, I would say yes. If you'd like to have a sidebar with me, I'd be happy to do that.
I would like, well.
Otherwise, I would say, please save it for the deposition.
Okay, I'll save it for the deposition, but I will make some other comments that bother me about this whole thing. I have a hard time separating what, I have a hard time understanding how some of our nonprofits, not this, not Woodman of the World, but some of the nonprofits that we have operating in the community, who are, obviously, they have to make money to pay their people. But how do you distinguish, how do we give Allegiant, CHI, whatever their name is today, how do we give them a tax exemption for what they do at the Blue Cross Blue Shield Building on Seventy Second and Mercy Road? I mean, they have, I'm sure, Internal Revenue Service tax exemption, and the things they do are charitable. But isn't there, I mean, they can't survive without making money, and I know that, and the charitable work, certainly they do some charity, but they certainly make a lot of money when they charge for surgeries and so forth. It's not like you go in and can have your appendix taken out for free, or for $10, or, you know, it's going to cost several thousand dollars, $10,000, $12,000 or more, $15,000, $20,000 to get your appendix out. So, I mean, where is the charity in that? And so I really question that. And the other thing too, I really go even further on a couple of other things. Several years ago, we listened to Prairie Life come in here and complain, I think that was a vote that I made a mistake on, rightfully so, I think, when they complained that people up the street were doing the same thing, but they had tax exemptions. It was also, people up the street were, it was also a hospital, and it was, but they did cardio. But when you walked in there, you couldn't tell the difference between that and Prairie Life, and Prairie Life pays taxes, and the hospital didn't. So I'm really, I'm really starting to slide down this slope, and I'm beginning to wonder, I'm going to say what shouldn't be said, but I really wonder whether churches are really charitable. Are they really? I mean, all these storefront churches and all those things, are they really charitable? What are they contributing? You know, I mean, I know people going in there and getting themselves religion and helping their souls and so forth, but is that a responsibility of government to subsidize people loving God? I think, I think they ought to be taxed. I mean, I just don't get it. I think it goes way beyond what's intended by this. And the other thing is, there's no tangible proof that they're doing any charitable work. We don't get any information from anybody that, I don't believe, I think maybe we do from some places, but we really don't get any reports saying that, you know, we gave away this much medical service, or we gave away this much counseling through the church, or we did this, we gave, I mean, I'd like to see it. Some of them are doing good work and are charitable. Others, when you look at their cars and stuff, makes you wonder. So I think this is a, going to, this whole case could open up a big door, asking a lot of questions about a lot of so-called nonprofits.
Commissioner Kraft?
Commissioner Boyle, I couldn't tell where you stood on this issue with your comments. So are you in favor of opposing this bill, or you?
No, I'm not in favor.
Of opposing it?
I'm going to be voting with Mr. Duda.
Okay, that's a rarity.
Yeah. Actually not.
But, you know, you brought out the hospitals and their charitableness, and what they do is they provide community service, which includes billboards saying they have a Lamaze class, television ads saying use our services because we provide quality care, and emergency services to sometimes the indigent, and sometimes not. You know, they just, so I agree with a lot of what you said, including that about many of the religious organizations. So many of these tax-exempt organizations are set up just to not have to pay.
Seems like it.
Taxes. And they're still using the police department, they're still using the streets and the fire department. But I'm going to vote for supporting this because I think it's important that, that the legislation, even though they'll probably discredit it and say, we're just greedy son of a guns because we want the property tax, why should we push that property tax off on the rest of our citizens? And that's the only reason I'm supporting this resolution.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, usually, and we operate in some principle of Roberts, but after I make this, I'm going to ask that if my motion can be rescinded, that it does, I didn't exactly want to vote, but my thought was, this probably wouldn't, you may put your feeling out there on this thing if we didn't get discussion going. So the point I want to make is, you know, when we throw churches in this, we're searching because the main comparison, comparing CHI and Woodman is that, you know, the hospitals went within the law. And if somebody shows up at a hospital door, they have to provide a service. Somebody shows up at Woodman and say, I can't afford insurance, Woodman is not going to provide them insurance, they're going to have to pay for it. So they're not going to do a fraternal benefit thing there and give some contribution to give insurance. I'm just saying. My point is, it smells bad because you're saying you're charitable, and you're selling a billion dollars' worth of insurance. And the law was on the books that said, you get taxed. That's my only piece. Now, you want to compare the hospital laws, you can debate that. Because you can say that they take up a big footprint, and that's been brought up here and that's being discussed, believe me, that's all over the country. People are having them pay pilots, like OPBD pays us, so that's in the, that's in the realm. But Woodman claiming to be a charitable organization, when you show up at a hospital, they have to, by law, give you insurance. If Woodman wants to start giving people insurance that can't afford it, I will say you're charitable, and I will back them 100%.
Commissioner Morgan?
Okay, I'm going to vote to support that bill, LB 414, for sure. Our opposing LB 414, for sure. The other thing, I'm not in favor of taxing churches. I hate to disagree with my friend Mike on that one. I do think what you said, Chris, you know, where you talk about going to the hospital and so on, I think it's important, we've talked about it for several years, the payment in lieu of tax at the pilot program. And the fact is, if you're going to a doctor's office and they have the buildings that are exempt out on whatever street on Dodge, 89th, 156, or wherever they're buying buildings, they've got doctors there. If you went into that office that I don't have, you know, the means to see the doctor to pay for that service, they're going to be paying for going there to get a mammogram or whatever it is. So I think we need to be looking at that, and that's a legislative matter to start to look at, but we can be supportive of that. So that, I just wanted to clearly say, that's where I stand on these issues, and certainly want to hopefully see that pass that this board is opposing LB 414. And one last comment I'll make, they're not moving to Conspulsa. And trust me on that, and that's a big statement to say, but they're not moving.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I, I'm curious about how these organizations that have, are requesting nonprofit status, and we say they don't get it. I wonder, how do we rationalize that with the declaration by the Internal Revenue Service, the big Kahuna in all of this? They give them nonprofit status of some sort. So who are we to say to the IRS, you're wrong? They're not, they're not charitable, they're not nonprofit. And I know they don't meet our state law, but maybe what we ought to do is to cut out all this discussion. And I raised the church issue just to kind of get everybody kind of.
Away.
Thinking. And kind of like, you can't be serious. But I really think, you know, if, we ought to look at the total picture of nonprofits, and who's doing what. And there's some doing better jobs than others. But if the IRS has given an organization nonprofit status, then I think that ought to be good enough for us, and I think we ought to have a law that says that. Because we get messed up with all these, you know, requirements, no alcoholic beverage, none of this, none of that, none of this, and then you qualify for being a charitable institution. I think we're second guessing the national government, and I think the federal government has spoken. And they certainly have, have done a job on deciding who's nonprofit. We ought to just forget all this discussion and go with them. If they say so, it's good enough for me.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yeah, I just want to say in closing, the Knights of Columbus are getting a raw deal.
Yeah, they are.
But in fairness, that's where they fell. And if there was a way to separate it, I would separate them out, let them do whatever they're doing. But, you know, there's nothing about Woodman thing that smells good. Even some big corporate titans around here kind of say it doesn't smell good, and I won't even say who they are. But with that, unless the board just wants to vote, I'd rather rescind it, because I am with Claire. I don't want to do anything with it, but I just somehow on the record wanted to know that, that smells bad. It smells bad. And so unless the board just wants to vote, I would prefer to rescind it and let the dialogue, wherever it is, go where it is, because I don't, I don't think there's any benefit in us taking the position, it'll do what it is. But I think, you know, people understand where we are. So if that's the board's will, I would like to rescind it. If not, we'll go with the vote on it.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I'd like to see it rescinded as well. And I also was surprised in the article in this morning's paper that the Knights of Columbus were dragged into this. I don't remember, did the county board do this, or did the county assessor? Does anybody know?
We did.
Did we do it? Did we do it to the Knights? When did we do that? I must have been talking when we voted.
Just because you had to make them fair with Woodman, they came into play?
Yeah, I kind of remember that discussion when they, and Woodman talked about how they had the satellite location, and then it was, the discussion was, well, so does Knights of Columbus, and then the argument was for consistency, that everybody should be treated the same.
Well, I think we ought to do something to, that just isn't right. I mean, particularly the work that they're doing, it's totally, you know, they're selling insurance, but that's not what that, that building is all about, that's not what they do.
Commissioner?
So I don't know, I mean, I, that's the first that I remember. I didn't know that we did that, I thought the county assessor did. So I'd like to get that maybe back on our agenda and reconsider that, what we did to them, because it isn't fair.
Commissioner Kraft?
Commissioner Rogers made an excellent point about the discussion, and we've made our positions known. We don't really need to take a vote. What is it going to accomplish? So, you know, if it goes to a vote, I'd probably abstain just because it's, it's a moot point.
Commissioner Rogers, it's back in your.
Oh, I would like to rescind it if I had.
Okay. All right. So we'll move on to consideration of whether to take a position on LB 652. This is the 911 Emergency Service Communication Act. And if you remember, Mr. Connery was here originally on this and thought maybe we could work in an amendment that would be to our favor. My understanding is that's not going to happen now, and he's here today to answer any questions or for us to take a position in opposing LB 652.
Come on down, Mark. He's always so excited.
Good morning, Mark Connery, Douglas County Communications Chief. LB 652 is supposed to help the state make a transition into what's going to be called Next Generation 911. And what Next Generation 911 is going to be is the ability to process multimedia information, not just voice, okay? So it's going to take a whole new network to deliver, and so it's probably going to be run by, the network's going to have to be run by the state. And so this bill has to be put into place to begin that process. But there is one thing that was really wrong with the bill, and that was the fact that they wanted to take the 911 surcharge that, for the wireline, that the county is given to the county. Right now, although the F fund is going down, it's sitting there probably in a neighborhood of about a million dollars, you know, maybe a million two, and their intent is to take that and put it into the fund. We talked to them and said, well, if you'll, if you'll, we'll put it into law, that you will make us whole, we could probably support this. And that didn't hap, they said, yes, we'll do that, and then it didn't happen. So, you know, the Public Wireless Advisory Council has been working with them, we've been working with Larry Dix over there, trying to get an idea of where this is going to go. The bill is flawed in three areas. One, it doesn't define Next Generation the way it should. It tries to take away the money that it's supposed to, supposed to do. And it does not give the authority for the Public Service Commission to spend the $17 million that's sitting in the Wireless Advisory Council, or the Wireless Advisory Fund, to make the funding as we transition into Next Generation. So, and the reason that's important is because the Attorney General's Office has come out with an opinion that we cannot use that money for Next Generation, we can only use it for wireless. Well, wireless is pretty much implemented throughout the state, so you have, you have $17 million. So the legislature needs to make those changes. So the bill is flawed in those three areas, and two of them could have a big impact on Douglas County. Now, we, there's probably an estimate of about 300, 350,000 cellular phones in Douglas County, and at 50 cents right now, I mean roughly, that would be $150,000 a year, you know, just in money. And we only get back in the neighborhood of about $400,000 in a year versus a million and a half. You know, I mean, you know, $150,000 a month is a lot of money, and we only get back. So our concern, or Douglas County's concern, has got to be the way, the way ahead. So the Public Service Wireless Advisory Board met yesterday and kind of decided they would take a neutral position with objections to those three areas, okay? So I would tend to agree with that, but if this bill would happen to pass, and it has that, that, you know, without getting amended, the fact that they would take away our wireless, I really don't know the right position to be in on this one because Larry, Larry has found out from the bill, from the head of the Telecommunications Committee, is the fact that he really doesn't think now's the time to move this forward out onto the floor. So there's a chance that it will never make. So there's a chance that it will never make the floor. But if you can, if you believe him and trust him, that's where we're at. Okay? So I am laying it all out for you. We have two positions, go neutral with opposing those three areas, or just come straight out opposed to it.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I appreciate your position. But I think, I think I'd like to hear a proponent speak about this, why this is a good thing. It looks to me, scanning this bill, it's 40 some pages long, it appears that what it does is centralize the 911 operations in the state, which, as you know, is a big, big problem when you start having 911 centers being a kitchen. It's one part of the state, and it's a woman sitting in a kitchen. When you call 911 in someplace out there, I don't know where it is, but 911 is someone's house, kitchen. And there needs to be, you know, everybody wants their own little P-SAP, I think they're called. Everybody wants their own. And the costs are out of this world. So, I mean, I think it's regionalization, I think it puts, it centralizes, you know, I'm not necessarily for that all the time. But I think this has a lot of positives. And I'd like to hear the other side. I understand this, you know, we lose our money and all that stuff. But if they're going to be handling this, then they should have the funding, not us. And, you know, really, the reality of this, you know, this is really a city operation, not county. Ninety percent of the calls now are from the city of Omaha. So, I mean, it's really ironic that we're running an operation for the city like this. So I'd like to hear someone speak in favor of it, rather than just, you know, I'm sorry, Mark, but I, you know, I can understand your position on it, it's, I just understand it. But I'd like to hear from somebody, either one of these senators or someone, you know, not necessarily our lobbyists, but I think there are some good things in this, as I scanned it. I think it's got some good positives. It's not, it's not the legislative bill from hell.
No, and I think, Mark, the first time he was up here, he gave us the pros and the cons of the bill. But again, Mark's, in my opinion, Mark's job is to come before the board and tell us, because this is his expertise field, how this is going to affect Douglas County. And if there's effects that will reduce our funding in order for us to provide the services to our citizens, then I think we need to know that. At the same time, if there's parts of it that outweigh that, then we also have to take that on. But to me, what I'm hearing is that it's still kind of a mixed up mess at this point, if you will. And lots of work needs to be done on it. So I think, Mark, I would probably agree that if we take a neutral and point out the pieces of it, that we can point out the pieces that we like, but we should definitely point out the pieces in which we feel are detrimental to our citizens in Douglas County. Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. I agree with you, Madam Chair. How much money does Douglas County collect every year in, for the, and I realize we're limited to 50 cents, but in the landline surcharge? How much goes into our budget every year from that?
Right now, I think it's, Joe, I think we put in a million, $250,000. But that money, that money is going down each year.
As the number of landlines decrease.
As the number of landline decreases.
But it's still over a million dollars a year going into our budget from this fund. And I'm Larry of the state, saying, let us have your money, and you'll come out okay in the end, trust us. It's, I've never seen it work yet. I think the three concerns that you have brought to our attention, I really honestly believe that we have as knowledgeable a person on 911 as there is in the state. And we're lucky to have, Mark. And I want to follow, where if you see these concerns, I think they're legitimate, and we should be bringing them to the legislature's attention. At the same time, staying neutral on the bill is just fine. It's just these three points that we have concerns with. I think that is the appropriate way to go on this one. Thank you.
And my, what Commissioner Boyle said is, is this a bad thing? No, I don't think it's a bad thing for the state to be, to do that, as long as they have the responsibility. But again, as in any state agency, because there's one other piece of this puzzle, is the governor now is kind of stepping in, because he doesn't know, he's starting to make indications that he wants this under a state agency. He hasn't decided who it's going to be, whether it be the Public Service Commission, whether it be the OCIO, whether it be NEMA. He's going to weigh in it on this at some point. I think things are in a little bit of a flux down there, as the new administration comes in. But I agree with you, this is what needs to happen for Next Generation 911. Because of the fact that there's going to be hard decisions, there's going to be decisions that are, the 911 calls are going to have to be delivered into a network, and that network needs to be run by the state, you know, because they're going to be in the position to do that, you know? And so I'm not saying the bill in its entirety is bad. I'm just saying those three things will have an impact on Douglas County. Okay? If we cannot allow the money that's sitting in the fund be used to spend, to fund Next Generation, then where are they going to come up with the money to migrate to Next Generation? I mean, that's something that has to be addressed in the bill. And, you know, kind of giving the authority. Because right now, the Attorney General's office said, you can't use that money for Next Generation. So that is a big, that's a concern. Whether or not we get the, you know, I think that we probably need to have a provision in there, that whatever we would have collected on there is given back to the state until Next Generation is fully funded, and they can figure out how much it's going to cost. That's the, that's the piece of the puzzle that nobody knows, is how much is this going to cost? So there's got to be a transition phase, there's got to be something going on. So you're right, the bill, as it's written, has a lot of good points.
Just to clarify, the amount in the budget is a million, 350.
Okay.
Commissioner Boyle?
But I think what it's doing is it's taking some money that was already in the fund and putting it in. I think our revenue per year is just a little bit underneath that right now.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, you know, if I understand this right, I guess I'm hearing you suggest, and I may be wrong, that the state wants to take the money but leave us with the operational costs. Is that right or wrong? Or is the state going to take the money and eventually, we would become part of a PSC operation, or some other modi, depending on what the governor thinks? Are we going to become a state agency?
No. In the, in the bill, in the bill, there is, there's a sentence in there, and if I can find it, that says that it will be local government's responsibility to, for the, for the handling and processing of the 911 calls, to include dispatch. So, so that's going to be a local government operation. Okay? And they specifically said that's a local government operation because of, and I'll try to find...
That's okay.
Okay. But it is in the bill. There's a sentence that does that. So I agree with you when you say there's a lot of work to be done. And I'm hoping that it doesn't get to the floor, so that we have an opportunity to address these issues, is what I'm hoping. And that would be, that would be why I would kind of recommend that we go neutral. But if, if we got an indication it's going to go this way, we probably be best to come out negative. But we won't know, we won't know what the, because we're getting conflicting reports. That's the only thing about this.
Well, I need to emphasize that, I really would like to hear a strong proponent explain why these things are bad, or why they're good. I mean, we've heard it, why it's bad, but, you know, why are they, why do they think this is good? I'd like to hear that before we go neutral, and certainly before we oppose it. You know, these things are, you know, they have a life of their own. It came from the Transportation Committee, Telecommunications Committee. So, I mean, it's got some, it's got some legs going down to the floor. So we need to, I don't know what we're doing to talk to them about what we think is wrong, but I don't know if it's wrong or if it's right. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, I just think on balance, it's a pretty decent bill. But again, I think going neutral is probably the best thing we ought to do, and I would hate to see us go opposing unless we, you know, we have another, somebody come up and may, I'd like to hear someone, a proponent, say why this is the best.
Okay. We'll work on trying to find that person.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes. I trust Mark and his opinion, and his sense of where this is going. I would like to give him the freedom to go down there and monitor and watch this, and then act according to Douglas County's needs. So I would make the motion that we allow him to monitor and defend the needs of Douglas County in front of the legislature.
I think, Mark, if you could restate the three items that we should be continuing discussion on, the funding?
I would, I would like to make sure that they have the established NINA definition for Next Generation, that includes the multimedia, that includes voice, that includes everything. Right now, everything in the bill is kind of concentrated on voice. And what we're doing is, we're getting ready to migrate to a bigger, to a bigger platform. So I would recommend that they take the national definition of Next Generation and put it in there, so that it would be all encompassing as we move forward. The second thing I would do is recommend that they can justify using the wireline money before they take it. In other words, since we don't know what the cost is, you know, if it's, if it is necessary to use that money, then it has to be substantiated. And then the third thing would be, what did I say? Oh, the ability to use the wireless surcharge fund as it exists, at a $17 million, to fund the planning and transition to Next Generation 911.
Okay. So with that, we can do one of two things. I think we can take a position of neutral with giving Mark and the lobbyist's direction to work on those three items on the bill. And then maybe report back to us after you have some discussions. And then in the meantime, we can also work on trying to get a little bit better perspective of someone who's a total proponent of the bill, as to if they have these concerns as well. Commissioner Kavanagh?
Is that a motion, Madam Chair?
Commissioner Duda, do you want to make a motion to?
I would move that Douglas County take a neutral stand regarding LB 652, but bring these three concerns to the attention of the legislature through our lobbyists.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further comments or discussion? Please vote.
Boy, this really is slow today. I'm trying, I'm trying. Now it's my turn, it won't take my vote. My vote is yes. There you go. I do.
Okay. There are just a couple other, LB 344 will be heard Friday, and that bill extends the NRD's bonding authority. So we better decide on if we want to take a position on that or not.
Which one is this?
LB 344, which will give the NRD additional bonding authority. It's been, you know, up and down over the years, it's been there. So, and we've always, if my memory serves me, we've always opposed it in the past. So I bring that to the board's attention. And again, it will be heard this Friday. Commissioner Boyle?
I'd like to ask our finance guy, Joe Lorenz, if he has any knowledge that he could talk to us about, about what's happened with the bonding authority at the NRD. I thought LB 160, which was a bill we fought tooth and nail, I mean, they were, I remember the proponents saying to the senators, do you want to be responsible for a flood and for death? And we lost. But anyway, I thought they had some humongous amount. I could be wrong, but for some reason, I thought they had $3 billion in bonding, that they did not have to go to a vote of the people. I mean, this bonding authority they got was extraordinary. And, yeah, and no vote of the people. I mean, they just go out and buy this land and make these lakes and sell them to developers. So, Joe, do you have?
I don't think it was that big, because I remember when we were having this discussion with them recently, that we saw that with the project up off Fort Street, and the other one by, in Sarpy County, that once they did that, they would have essentially used all their bonding capacity. And so this is why this is happening, because they're up against their limit. And in a fair, fairly quick amount of time, I think, within, what, three, five years, they hit their limit.
You know, this is a threat to the property tax. You know, I assume they're passing this cost on through a mill levy.
Sure.
For property taxes. And this is one of those sneakers, you know, that comes sliding through, and we're all sitting here struggling, trying to figure out how to keep everything operating. And they're out there, you know, building lakes and charging everything. They've maxed out their credit cards. And, you know, we're sitting here saying, go ahead, we'll just pay your bills. I am absolutely opposed to, the whole operation is run amok. It's absolutely out of control, and has been for years. Outside of that, I don't have an opinion.
Patrick?
So what this bill proposes to do, Commissioners, is add another ability to levy. And this is for each district having the power and authority to issue general obligation bonds for the purposes of financing all their part at the cost of non-revenue producing water projects authorized by law. Right now, what they have pertains to revenue producing, and this would add it to, give an ability for non-revenue producing. And please don't ask me what non-revenue producing facilities are, because I have no idea.
Commissioner Boyle?
That's bowling balls. I think what we ought to do is, in addition to opposing this, is that we need to write the governor and point out to him, and also Senator Hadley, who headed up the property tax hearings around the state, that this is a massive threat to increase property taxes. And it may be a sleeper bill, but it's, and get information from Joe Lorenz about what has happened with the mill levy and what this has meant. I think, you know, this, and the interest on all this is just mind boggling. It is really one of the most incredible tax increases that I think we'd ever, will ever occur in the county. I mean, it's huge. And so I think we ought to, we really seriously should write the governor and say, we need to point this out to you, this is urgent. Senator Hadley, this is urgent. You know, this is going to increase taxes. They already have, they've maxed out their bonds already. Please don't let this happen. And that's what I think we ought to do. And I was going to joke and say we ought to include an amendment to our voting to condemn the board while we're at it.
So is that a motion to oppose LB 344?
Absolutely.
Not condemning the board?
No, 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 no. Is there a second?
I've already done that.
Please vote.
Did you want to add that amendment?
No.
So when we vote yes, we're opposing.
Motion passes. Just a couple of other updates. I attended the hearing on LB 15, which is the Guardian at Lydham bill, on Thursday, February 26. And there has been a change where Senator Crist has offered an amendment to the bill, instead of putting all of the Supreme Court guidelines that were written back in 2007, in the bill, he's agreed with the Supreme Court Justice for those to become court rules. And then they were also still going to be working on the bifurcating of the roles of the GAL between advocates and attorneys. And I have to say, it was a very impressive hearing. Laura McCormick was there as well. But there were parents from across the state that came to speak. So it, it almost as it started, kind of looked like it was going to be a Douglas County issue, if you will. But it ended up being a very statewide issue, which was a very big eye opener to some of the senators that afternoon. And they, they were, they were really, really good at listening to what people were saying and asked good questions. So I was... So I was real impressed with that hearing. And the other, we can bring these back next week, but LB 398, which exempts all tangible personal property from property tax, probably better find out a little bit more on that one. And LB 476, which provides duties for county assessors and the property tax administrator relating to the tax exempt real property. So just find out just a little bit more and maybe send a, did they have hearings?
Commissioner Marco C. Martin. LB 476 by Senator Davis, we opposed that back in the beginning of February, but the hearing is scheduled for 3/5.
For 3/5?
For March 5th.
But we already opposed it?
But we have already opposed it. Yes, the board has.
Okay, good. So just LB 398?
And the 398, we have not taken a position on.
Okay. We'll find out a little bit more on that one. Okay. Any, Commissioner Boyle?
I was only going to mention that I attended a couple of, two or three sessions that were really particularly important in Washington, dealing with the treatment of mentally ill adults that are picked up and how they're imprisoned or not imprisoned. And so I'm going to get a, I have a tape of the session that was ordered, that's ordered, I'm going to order and get the information to you and possibly even bring in, there was a psychiatrist that spoke that had really done remarkable things. So I'm going to follow up on that and I thought I'd report back to you that it was very useful.
There, also on that note, the National Association is moving forward with the partnership with the councils for state government and the Department of Labor in Sampson now and working on that issue, which is, it's really phenomenal what's happening. So that's real cool. And then lastly, one thing we did spend a lot of time on and we even went to the Hill for a briefing on the Medicaid issue, but we also talked a lot about, if you remember, Senator Chris has LB 12, which in, has to do with Medicaid being suspended rather than terminated when individuals enter our jail facilities. Because when the law was written, they didn't distinguish between jails and prisons. And so those in our facilities are pre-adjudicated until sentencing, so they come in pre-adjudicated. So what we were asking is that that provision be at the federal level fixed so that Medicaid will continue until they're sentenced. And so that's pretty exciting stuff because it's been talked a lot for a long time, but there's actually a little bit more movement and better understanding of the issue. At the same time, not the state is really looking at, because we are one of the states at this particular point in time where we terminate rather than suspend. So lots of good stuff happening on those two issues, so we'll keep you posted. No other legislative stuff. We do have need for an executive session for personnel and litigation. Is there a motion?
I agree. We adjourn and go into executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Is it recessed, not adjourned?
Uh, recessed, yeah.
Recession, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Are we going to play dodgeball during recess?
Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea.